As a premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda.
Good evening, we'd like to call to order the James City County Service Authority Board of Directors' Regular Meeting, Mr. Paul, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Knoll.
Presentations tonight, sir.
It is my pleasure to have this opportunity to recognize David Osborne, who is retiring from the James City Service Authority after 20 years of service. Dave, come on up. So prior to joining the James City Service Authority, Dave served in the United States Navy and also worked at the Newport News Shipyard, but he worked for the Service Authority the longest of any of his employers, and I'm sure that the Service Authority has been his favorite employer as well. During Dave's career with the Service Authority, he worked in three different sections of the Service Authority. He started as an industrial electrician, he then went to the Five Forks Water Treatment Plant and worked as an operator, and then eventually was promoted to the plant supervisor there, and then he became the superintendent of wastewater facilities several years ago. So that varied experience that he has, that he's had with the Service Authority really speaks to the diversity of talent that Dave has, and he's been a key contributor to this organization for 20 years, and we're gonna miss him. I tried to talk him into staying, but was unsuccessful, but you know, Dave, just on a personal note, you know, obviously I've worked with you in the entire time that I've been with the Service Authority, but it's really only been the last three or four years when your job brought you to Tuning Road that I've gotten to know you a little bit better, and your office has been just a few doors down from mine, and I've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with you more closely and get to know you better, and we wish you the best, wish you the very best after 20 years of outstanding service to the organization. One of the things about Dave, and I think this, you'll sense this from the commendation that I'm gonna read, every step of the way where Dave went, he made operational improvements and introduced new technology in all the jobs that he, that he had with the Service Authority, and, and I think that's one of his lasting contributions to the organization, in addition to the fact that he's just been an outstanding mentor to a lot of the younger employees over the years. So, having said that, I'm gonna read this commendation honoring the service of David F. Osborne. Whereas Mr. David Osborne has been employed by the James City Service Authority for 20 years, beginning July 1st, 2004, and whereas Mr. Osborne is retiring from the JCSA effective December 1st, 2024, and whereas Mr. Osborne began his career with JCSA in the support section as an industrial electrician, and whereas Mr. Osborne then became an operator at the Five Forks Water Treatment Plant, and whereas Mr. Osborne was later promoted to the Five Forks Water Treatment Plant Supervisor, where he improved maintenance and operational protocols while overseeing the production of clean water at JCSA's primary water source, and whereas Mr. Osborne was then promoted to Superintendent of Wastewater Facilities, where he oversaw the operation and maintenance of 77 pump stations, and whereas in this position, Mr. Osborne was responsible for modernizing operations and introducing the use of new technology, thereby improving efficiency, and whereas Mr. Osborne mentored many employees during his tenure at the JCSA, leaving a lasting legacy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the James City Service Authority, James City County, Virginia, does hereby recognize Mr. David F. Osborne and presents this resolution as a token of appreciation for his dedicated service to the James City Service Authority. Be it further resolved that the Board of Directors offers its best wishes to Mr. Osborne on his retirement, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors to be affixed this 13th day of November 2024, signed Barbara Knoll, Chair of the Board of Directors of the James City Service Authority. And I would also like to recognize David's wife, Sarah, is here as well, and, and with that, Dave, it is my great pleasure to present this to you, and again, thank you for everything you've done for the Service Authority, and best wishes for the future.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Dave, 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 do you want a picture with the boy?
Do you want a photo, sir?
You wanna say anything, don't you?
You wanna say anything?
I don't wanna say anything.
You wanna say anything? We'll get a photo, we'll get a photo.
Renee will direct you.
So now we're going to recess this meeting till after the Board of Supervisors meeting closes this evening, because there are a few things that are gonna take time, and we don't want you at all to sit here for that, so we'll resume after our Board of Supervisors meeting.
Call this regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Good evening, Mr. Stevens, if you call the role.
Ms. Knoll.
President.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Palatine District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District and is Vice Chair of the Board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is Chair of the Board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and Vice Chair Eisenhour will introduce our pledge leader.
Okay, this evening, our pledge leader is Charlie West, who's from my district, the Jamestown District, and Charlie is here tonight with his parents, Ethan and Sarah West, and his siblings, Henry and Eloise. They reside in the Windsor Forest neighborhood, and Charlie is a third grader at Blaton Elementary School. And his interests, he loves playing and watching sports, reading and spending time with friends, and his sports are pretty varied, lacrosse warriors and Team Nine, Team 91, basketball, summer swim team for Windsor Forest, Windsor Forest Frogs, and he's in the Creative Riding Club and ship basketball. Programs and other activities through James City County is rec basketball and lacrosse, Williamsburg Warriors. So Charlie, if you would, come up and after a moment of silence, lead us in the pledge, and then afterwards we'll have a certificate for you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Great job, Charlie. We have a certificate, and we'll get some photos with his family if you want.
Okay, sure.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I want to recognize the historic events of last Tuesday, and the election of Donald J. Trump as our president-elect, and I look forward to him taking office and to the changes that his administration will be undertaking in the policies that he will be advancing. I would note this afternoon that one of our own, a William &amp; Mary graduate, Matt Gates, was nominated as his appointee, or designee for the Attorney General's office, and so that is a very exciting development for our local community, having one of our own, ceding to the highest level in the law enforcement sector. I'd also like to congratulate Diana Mormon and all of the folks who participated as volunteers, poll workers, poll watchers on Tuesday. I think James City County can be very proud that it has safe, free, and fair elections, and that's not something that every community can say, and that's something that we all should be proud of. Again, I would like to reiterate the, my call to adjust the meeting time of the Board to make it more, more convenient for working citizens to attend the Board meetings. One of the characteristics that the Board likes to promote is transparency, and another should be civic engagement and citizen participation, and having meeting times at 5:00 PM is a challenge for those of us who still work, particularly those who have employees who we have to get in and off the clock. I'd also like to reiterate my call for a design charrette with regard to the proposed county complex. I think that we will get better ideas that are more reflective of our community values and character by having an open process. You can still utilize the selected firms to do the actual design drawings, but they would be using somebody else's idea, and that happens a fair amount, and so, you know, I would encourage the Board to consider that as an alternative, and if that's not acceptable, then I would suggest that the Board utilize the existing design review committee that's set up for the new town development. It has highly credentialed architectural professionals who could provide significant guidance with regard to the project design, its architecture, and its layout, and I think that would be really helpful at this point in time. As we look ahead as to the cost of this municipal complex, we hopefully can look forward to reducing interest rates so that it will make our overall occupancy cost lower, so I think time is on our side with regard to the interest rate environment, and that we could expect, reasonably expect, to see interest rates decline over the next 12 to 24 months. So it's not something that we have to be in a rush to do tomorrow, time is on our side. I'd also like to, again, call for further study of the Williamsburg-James City County School Alliance. I think that there should be a feasibility study on our side as to what are the actual costs and benefits of having a shared system, and if those cost and benefit are not directly beneficial to the taxpayers of James City County, well then we need to consider Plan On the way here this evening, I had four light cycles at Jamestown Road and 199, so that's a continuing problem. Hopefully you will move up in your priority, the above grade interchange for 199 at Route 5, and that we can then build a bridge over Jamestown Road and allow that traffic to work itself out. Also extending Oxford Lane to Route 5 to give a connector between Jamestown and Route 5 would also be very helpful, and I would also like for you to consider DOGE, a Department of Government Efficiency for James City County. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just do want to be clear that we did have an open process for the government center design. That brings us to consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following item, authorization for leave payout, and we do have Amy Jarvis here if we have any questions. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
I wish for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to the first of our public hearings. Our planning commission representative this evening is Mr. Jack Haldeman, thank you for being here, and the first public hearing is lease of real property, 2054 Jamestown Road lease agreement with Hampton Marine Services Corporation. Alastair. Glad to see you, Alastair, at first, glad to see you.
Larson, members of the Board, this item is for the renewal of the lease with Hampton Marine Services Corporation, so the county has maintained a lease with Hampton Marine Services, it's a boat repair business on the Marina site. This lease would be a three-year renewal. Monthly payments would be $513.75, and that rent payment would increase by 3% annually. Over the course of the lease, the county would collect $18,965 in rent payments. I'm gonna happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Okay, we do not have a PC report on this, so we will open the public hearing. We have one speaker card, Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. $518 a month, you can barely get a self-storage unit for that. So as a taxpayer, I'd like to know what's in it for us, and is that a critical service that must, that must be provided at that location, and if it is, then those rates should be marked for that particular facility, and I, as a commercial real estate developer and broker, I don't believe that represents market value of the location, so I would encourage you to perhaps revisit that and structure a deal that might be more beneficial to taxpayers. Thank you.
Any further cards? Close the public hearing, look to the Board for discussion and/or a motion.
Move the adoption of the lease.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
We have now SUP 24-0022, 4871 Long Hill Road, Williamsburg Montessori School, Terry Costello to give the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Ms. Sandy Andrews of Williamsburg Montessori School has applied for a special use permit to allow for a school within an existing place of public assembly at 4871 Long Hill Road. The property is currently the site of Wellspring United Methodist Church, Zoned R2 General Residential, is designated Low Density Residential on the comprehensive plan, land use map, and is located inside the primary service area. The current size of the church is 7,647 square feet and has a mixture of gravel and paved parking spaces for a total of 105. The entrance to the site is paved and leads to the side driveway that will be utilized as a drop-off and pickup point. Most parents will utilize this feature. Some students will be bused from the school main campus on Long Hill Road. The school will have a maximum of 25 children in grades seven and eight. There will be two full-time teachers and two part-time teachers. The hours of operation will be from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. The school year begins the last week of August and ends in mid-June. All physical education activities will take place off-site. However, there may be the occasional activities outdoors. Those areas will be towards the rear of the property or on the side of the building adjacent to the King of Glory Church. During the summer months, the school may operate a summer program with the hours of 8 to 5. Staff finds the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is it expected to negatively impact level of service for roads or other public services. Staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application subject to the proposed conditions. At its October 2 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application subject to the conditions by a vote of 5 to 0. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Any questions for staff at this point? All right. Josh Haldeman? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'd like to digress just for a second and endorse Mr. Henderson's comments about the voting experience. From my perspective, it couldn't have been easier, couldn't have been nicer, and I'd like to join him in saying thank you to those who made it possible. With regard to this application, as Ms. Costello mentioned, the Board voted to recommend approval by a vote of 5 to 0. There were two absences. There was a question about changes to the building footprint. There are none. We had one letter from a neighbor immediately to the north expressing concern about the extra traffic. There were no public speakers. We had a discussion on condition number six. The original condition stated that the SUP would expire in one year if the school had closed for one year, and after a discussion, the Planning Commission recommends that we change the condition from one year to two. Staff agreed, and that's really it.
Thank you very much. That, I will open the public hearing. Chris Henderson.
My lucky day. Good evening, members of the Board, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I'm supportive of the Montessori School. I think they're an excellent institution, love their program, think it's terrific. My concerns are really about traffic, and as I look at it, I believe this is a left-in only and no left-out. So all traffic exiting the site will be required to turn right, go through the roundabout, and then head back towards the original Montessori School. With only 25 students, you're looking at 50-vehicle trips per day, assuming that each student is dropped off by a parent, and there's not two kids in that grade level per vehicle. So I don't think the traffic burden is going to be overwhelming. I just, having been a planning commissioner, I just want to be cautious about these types of uses where, you know, maybe a long-term solution for Montessori is a new campus where they can integrate all of their facilities, because as the Planning Commission report or the Planning Department report indicates, they will be doing physical activities off-site. So that means they're going to have to be taken by bus or van to a different location and then brought back. So that's my only concern. I'm still supportive, but thank you.
Are there any other cards? All right. Close the public hearing. Look to the Board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to SUP 24-0010, 724 Arlington Island Road Tourist Home. Joshua Crump to give staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Members of the Board. Mr. Pogony, Mr. Corey Pogony has applied for a special use permit to allow for the use of a tourist home of a one-bedroom, single-family home at 724 Arlington Island Road. The property is Zoned A1 General Agricultural and is designated rural lands on the Conference of Plan Land Use Map. If granted, the conditions for this special use permit would limit the occupancy per rental to a maximum of two occupants, permit one bedroom, and restrict parking to only two vehicles on the property, and prohibit oversized vehicles, commercial vehicles. County staff has been working with the applicant to obtain proper permits, licensing, and inspections, and as of today, I'm pleased to update that the property is in full compliance with all permits, their building safety permits, and stormwater resource protection. Further, staff has included conditions if the special use permit is approved that the property shall continue to be in full compliance with all applicable regulations, including an updated certificate of occupancy, evidence of a business license, and any other work the applicant may wish to seek in the future prior to the operation of the tourist home. And within 12 months of the date of approval, or the SGP will be automatically voided. While staff finds some favorable factors for this application, such as the presence of adequate off-street parking and the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds the proposal is not fully consistent with the adopted 2045 Conference of Plan recommendations for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. At its August 7 meeting, the Planning Commission did not make a recommendation to the Board Supervisors after a motion to recommend approval resulted in a tie vote of 3 to 3. Should the Board Supervisors approve this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here as well.
Thank you. Staff at this time? All right. Thank you. And Mr. Haldeman?
Oh, again, pardon me. This application was originally scheduled for the July meeting. At the request of the applicant, it was deferred until the August meeting. But at the July meeting, we had a speaker who took issue with the subject. It's the immediate neighbor to the left. He was opposed, he was concerned about extra traffic on that road, and also he mentioned that the, that tourist home would have an easement onto his dock, and he was concerned about renters having access to his dock. The Planning Commission later decided that that was not our business, something he would have to work out himself. The Planning Commission voted 3 to 3 on this application with one absentee, and thus we have no recommendation. The votes against were concerned with running the tourist home after the applicant was notified that he needed an SUP and no building permit or wetland board approval for the stairs had been made. There was also a concern about increased traffic on the private gravel road that would affect other homeowners on that road. There was, the application does not meet two of the criteria, two of the four criteria from the Comprehensive Plan. That is, the property owner is not living on-site, and it is not a major road. Those voted, those who voted for the application cited that the applicant has spent a lot of money and time and has made a good-faith effort to complete the application process, that the Planning Commission is not an enforcement agency, that tourist homes are intended for rural lands and can support the rural economy, and that there are few major roads in the rural lands on which to build tourist homes. And finally, there is another tourist home directly across the creek on the same rural road. So those are the four reasons for the votes for. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Yes, can you maybe expand a little bit on the neighbor and where his dock is located and how that easement, because it doesn't make sense to me about, you know, I guess this property right here is to the, access to the water is to the right, and the neighbors to the left, where, can you?
The neighbor claimed in his, at our meeting, that he had a dock in the property adjacent to this tourist home for which the tourist home has an easement. And he was okay with that as long as it was the owner who was using the dock. I'm not quite sure where the dock is to answer your question, finally. But he just didn't want renters using it.
If I may, I can, being that I live down there, that's Dr. Latimer's piece, and when they divided those up in there, they had a right to use his, it's not his pier, but it's his boat landing. So they have a easement to use his boat landing, but it's on his property, and he's talked to me extensively about it, and I don't know if he's speaking tonight, but I know he spoke at the Planning Commission. And his worry was that if, you know, if there is anybody in the tourist home and come over to use that area to put their boat in, then something happens, then he is, then told by his lawyer, he's liable possibly for somebody getting hurt. And he's very protective of that boat landing down there, and, because a lot of people years ago were abusing it and using it, and not the neighbors at camp, but people coming back in there.
Can you point out anywhere on, where this boat landing is on the property? I mean, I'm confused, because is, if the boat landing off of the piece of property that is outlined there in the color?
You can't really see it from here because of the wording and everything, but if you go down a little bit further down where it says Forest Lake, right in through there, and you go back down, and it's between that and his property, which is about where the 1,000-foot thing is right there?
Okay.
And it goes back through, and it comes out onto Mill Creek, and the property over on the other side that we're talking about is on Bat Creek, which is on the opposite side of the creek.
So the boat landing we're talking about is on a different creek?
It's on Dyoskin Creek, probably.
It's on a different creek, not on the one adjacent to this.
Right, he'd have to drive down the road and across the street.
And yet, this property has access to that as by an easement.
Yes, and there's a, that road down through that section, from right where you see the water where his land touches Arlington Island, there is a, the county had them years ago, when they divided that up, put a road down through there that was asphalt. From there up, just about where the water ends, if you go down Arlington Island, a little bit up further, and you see the woods pick up, that's a gravel road all the way out. And the neighbors all in that area, I do a lot to take care of, and so does some of the other neighbors, and they all pitch in to keep the road up. So everybody in that area, you know, when we ask for money for asphalt or saw, or millings, they put in to keep the road up. And I try to maintain it with my equipment, and so does a couple others that have equipment able to keep that maintained. But I think all the neighbors at this point, including the applicant, has put in funds to help keep it up.
So the boat landing is not immediately close to this piece of property?
No.
It's elsewhere, and it's by easement that everybody in the area from, that was part of this subdivision, has access to it? And the concern is whether or not the renters would have access to it as opposed to the owner?
Right, and basically, this is set up as a small subdivision?
Yeah.
Here, but further up is all rural lands. So that's why the county had it so they could divide it up. And, so it's a little, you know, it's kind of, it's rural lands, but it's a subdivision within rural lands, and there's rural lands on the other side of it, so it's kind of a mixed bag in, within the rural lands.
Thank you, that helps clarify a certain bit.
Mr. Haldeman? Just the owner live?
The owner lives in Richmond. The owners, there are two. It's a partnership.
And the, and Mr. Haldeman, the other Airbnb, sort of, I'm sure the Board knows, because I had to come before this Board as well, the other Airbnb is the one I own. And I was granted that in the rural area because of the proximity of where I lived next door to that. And when this, when this comes down to vote, Madam Chair, when this comes down to vote, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Because of the proximity of mine to this one, I don't want to cloud the water for the Board members and allow y'all to judge it on its merit, not on me being next door down the road from it.
Mr. Haldeman? Also, is it my understanding, my very incorrect, that the gentleman has been operating this as a B&B illegally?
That's correct.
And for how long?
From late 2023. He began operating it, he, from memory, he was contacted by the county. They, he started the application process, then stopped it, but continued the business. He also had not received Chesapeake or state approval for the dock that he's putting in. But the application process is now ongoing, both the application for the home itself and for the dock is now ongoing.
Any further questions for Mr. Haldeman? All right. Open the public hearing. We have one speaker card, and that's the applicant this evening. I didn't want to misspell your name, so if you could pronounce your name for me one more time, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I'm Corey Pinion. Thank you, folks. Josh, I don't know if the, my presentation can be put up? Thank you all for taking the time to hear my application. My name's Corey Pinion. I'm the owner of 724 Arlington Island Road. I just wanted to take a few minutes to give you all a little bit better picture of who I am, the property, and my request to operate a short-term rental. So I'll go through four sections, just a little bit of context about me and the property, some detail on the improvements, addressing some of the concerns that we've heard, and then the overall benefits of approval. So I have one other Airbnb in Richmond near where I live. I've been operating for about a year, so 4.82 stars, Superhost rating. I have a co-host who is an employee of mine that I hired just to make sure I have a second tier of response in case I were to ever not get to a message in time or there were an emergency. So very strong track record of timely response, and you're not taking a flyer on unproven hosts. So this is the property. As we saw from before, it's kind of in the western end of the county. It's on nine acres. It's very secluded. It's pretty remote, and the primary appeal is for the property itself. It's kind of a destination property. People come to enjoy the waterfront. There are no houses directly across. The nearest other house is 430 feet to the west. And just to clarify, that neighbor is not the neighbor that owns the boat ramp. I stood in that neighbor's kitchen, and they were all for this Airbnb. So there's really not anyone nearby to bother, but even if there were, it's a one-bedroom house with a two-person occupancy limit. So this is not a party house. This is a place that one or two people come to enjoy nature and the waterfront. I purchased it in 2022 with the intent to revitalize it, so this has been a kind of a two-year project in the making. It's got a beautiful scenic waterfront. The house needed a lot of work when I bought it, and the grounds were in disrepair and full of debris. So over that timeframe, I've been making improvements to the house and cleaning up the area to make the property more presentable. A little more details there. So here's a picture of the waterfront, which is the primary kind of appeal of the property. That's the new dock. I hired a licensed contractor, and the contract specified they needed to get it properly permitted. But in July, when I was talking with the county about this SUP, I proactively asked, hey, did he get the permit like he was supposed to? And that surfaced that he had not. That has since been rectified, but that's just to clarify what happened with the dock permit. Brand-new dock, beautiful waterfront. You can see there's not a lot of folks. The nearest house within sight across the water is a little over 1,000 feet over the water to the left there. There's a little bit of my personal use of the property, so my girlfriend and I go regularly. This is my dog Cash. We love to kayak, paddleboard. The water is the primary appeal. The water is the primary appeal of the property. Good fishing, kayaking, that's that's our our primary use. And that's what most people would be interested in the property for. Little picture of the exterior of the property. It's a simple one-bedroom detached home. Last I checked, there were no other one-bedroom detached Airbnbs operating in the area. So it's kind of an unmet niche. But I redid the siding on the exterior, put in a new roof, redid the kitchen, redid the bathrooms, put in a new HVAC system, and it's fully outfitted to be safe and comfortable and luxurious for guests. So fire extinguishers, first aid, smoke detectors, Starlink internet, everything that guests need, dishwasher, washer dryer. Just a little little picture of some of the the interior space. This is the living room, the dining area, and the bedroom. Now, I'll just jump into some of the concerns that I've heard, talking with staff and what we heard tonight. So I've kind of heard three categories of concern. The first is it violates two of the four recommended guidelines, one of which is it's not on a major road. But we already have numerous examples that have been approved with that same exact issue, including one on this very road. We're talking about a one-bedroom home, and this is a destination property. People tend to book for at least three nights. I've had even guests for for one or two weeks, right? So it's very, very low vehicle traffic, less than one vehicle per day incrementally. And I'm still lower impact than if you lived in a three- or four-bedroom home on that road, and were commuting every day. Owner not residing on the property. So I have a co-host and a full-time maintenance man at my disposal, a proven track record of timely response, and I I go there regularly. So I'm there in the spring and the summer to go fishing. I'm there in the fall and the winter to hunt in the area. I love the outdoors. So it's it's not like I'm a faraway investor with no personal connection to the property. Impact to neighbors, the boat ramp. So I didn't know that we had needed access to a boat ramp until I was told by staff two years after I'd already bought the house, that there is a boat ramp in the area. And if you go online, there's not any mention online that there's a boat ramp. So guests will not have access to it. I don't know how they would find out that there is a boat ramp. I I think this should be a non-concern. And the boat ramp is is, like we were discussing, it's fairly far down the the road to the west. Will there be a lot of impact to the road? Again, vehicles per day is still very low. I've already contributed to the to the shared road fund, and I, before this came up, I proactively texted Lisa Gardner, the the neighbor that manages the road fund, and said, hey, if my Airbnb gets approved, I'll pay extra to the road fund, just to account for any increase of traffic that would ensue. And I'll have a quiet hours policy if approved, right? Just to nip in the bud any concern that there might be noise or or friction with the neighbors. Regarding not or operating without an SUP, I listed it on January 30th of 2024. I had actually applied in the fall for an SUP. And in conversations with staff, because I wasn't done with the work, we concluded, oh, I should wait until the work is done. The work was done. In my head, it was just let them know it's done and pay the fee, and I'm good to go. So I listed it, emailed staff like the day before the first guest arrived, and then was told that it's actually a restart of the process, right? So I paid the fee and restarted the process and dramatically underestimated the complexity of of this process. This is my first time ever dealing with this type of thing. That's no excuse. I I that wasn't right, and it's not okay. I will volunteer to pay whatever fines or fees the the board deems appropriate. I just really ask that you not be so punitive as to deny the entire venture because of that mistake. I I won't be able to to justify continuing to have the house if if that happens. I did want to take a minute and just leave share some of the reviews from some of our first guests. These are not cherry picked. These are just the first four people in chronological order that stayed in February after I I first listed it. And again, not saying it was okay that I was operating without a permit, but I did just want to give a little picture of the some of what the folks are are appreciating about the house. All five-star reviews recommending this stay. Many, a surprising number vocalized wanting to come back year after year. The one at the bottom there, I'll be coming back, so you all should book your time before I book it all up. It's 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 just it's a nice serene destination for folks to come and enjoy. People come from all over, and they they will tend to do day trips, you know, to, you know, other sites within the county. But for the most part, it's not a lot of in and out. You know, this is a place that you go to relax. They bring their food with them, relax, cook, enjoy the the waterfront. So that just brings me to, in summary, the benefits of approval. It benefits James City County. I beautified the property, improved the property value. I pay property taxes. I hire cleaners. It's turned a, you know, a property that was otherwise fairly blighted into a beautiful place. It benefits the community for all those same reasons, with really no downside, paying extra to the road fund, really minimal impact, no use of the boat ramp. And it benefits guests, obviously, folks that might not otherwise get to enjoy this place and this and and the county and come spend money here, find it, come and enjoy it. And of course, with staff conditions mitigating the concerns of impact to neighbors, I I can't see why, how overall this wouldn't be a net positive for everyone. But thank you for your consideration. Are there any questions I can answer?
Can I just follow on on the notion that you're currently offering the the site as an Airbnb?
No, no, I actually have a two-page printout of the timeline, because this is it's very detailed and complex, all of the communications that have happened over two years. So I listed it as soon as I got the letter from the county saying, you don't have a permit. I paid the permit fee the next day. So that was May, May, sorry, May 14th, 2024. And in my mind, okay, we're good to go.
You knew in 2023 that you needed a permit, right?
Yes, I applied in the fall of 2023, pulled the permit application after being told, ah, it's not ready, so we should wait, right? But I thought it was like, pick the application back up, right? And then in early July, after meeting the the planning members at the property and being explained the full process, I realized, oh, this is not a pay the fee and you have a permit type situation, right? So that's when I delisted it. I delisted it July, July 16, 2024, the same day that I had met four county officials at the property and have not been operating since July 16th. So I'm not operating now.
When have you posted on on Airbnb?
So it would have been live from January 30th until July 16th.
And when when I I saw the advertisement that was in in the packet, it indicated that you were offering it for seven people and that you promoted the idea that the bedroom had bunk beds that were available plus sleepers sofas in the in the living room.
Yeah, as soon as so that same meeting in July, then staff vocalized there'd be a two-person limit. I took it down, and then I had my team go and my maintenance man go and pull the extra bunk beds out. And so, to be honest, nobody really wants has none of the guests that I had had wanted to have a lot of people there anyway. So I just figured if it's a a family with kids, they might want it. But it's no big deal. So I just pulled the the beds out and happy to comply with a two-person.
Does Richmond have a permitting process?
I believe they just changed it. So my team is now working through the process of trying to trying to figure that out.
And you and your co-host both are in Richmond.
Yes, yes.
And is there anybody local that that is involved in this process?
The cleaners, we use a couple of cleaners that we source through an app called Turno that integrates with Airbnb that bids it out to local folks. But I'm 45-minute drive, and my maintenance man's about a 35-minute drive from from the place. So if I need to drop anything at a moment's notice for an emergency, it's not it's not a big deal.
Thank you. Well, you mentioned on the dock permit, you that it's, has it been applied for or has it actually been granted?
It was granted. I talked to Mr. Coghill on the drive here, and he confirmed today they finalized everything.
You have you have a granted application to cover the the dock that that?
Yes, construction permit. Yes.
Thank you.
So I Googled short-term rentals in Richmond, and beginning July 1st, 2020, applicants had to do a short-term rental permit. So are you operating in Richmond without a permit currently?
Yes.
Okay. And so my question was going to be the same one that Supervisor McGlinnan also asked, if there was anyone local. So both you and the co-host live in the Richmond, and I know it's 45, but do you both live in the Richmond area? Just so I'm clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, he, yeah, he lives, I think he just moved north of town, yeah. The the Airbnb is the is my office is a multi-unit building, and it's just the apartment on the back of the office that we work out of.
Thank you. All right, are there any further questions? Any other? I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Give me just one moment, please. All right. Look to the board for discussion and/or motion.
I ask a couple of questions of staff.
Yes. Mr. Trump?
Is there a, the applicant seems to be willing to put into the SUP a condition that specifically says that guests do not have access to that boat ramp? Is that that's not in in the conditions right now, but it would be something that we could put in, I would imagine?
That's something we do not have listed in the conditions right now, and we may have to consult with the county attorney and see if that's something we could add.
Okay. And then the other one, and maybe the county attorney wants to weigh in on this as well. When he mentions quiet hour policies, it doesn't specify what that is. And I know that when we were discussing out in those kinds of areas, there's really, you know, it would it would it would need to be specified, I would think, in the in an SUP in order to have any validity for enforcement. So those are the those are two things that, you know, I am I'm not convinced one way or the other as to whether yet whether I want to support this application, but those are two things that I think would be, if it's going to be there, would need to be taken care of so that they are enforceable SUP conditions. That's just something for my supervisors to consider and maybe discuss. I'll be I'll be abstaining, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to deny.
Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
He's not, he's abstaining.
I just wanted to give him that chance. Wonderful, so thank you. Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next two cases will be done as one-staff presentation, but with separate hearings and votes. So first, there will be the hearing on AFD 240003, 9812, Old Stage Road, Barnes Swamp, AFD withdrawal. More, I tell you, y'all are up there before Morgan is to give the staff report, and you're going to give it on both. So I'm going to go ahead and say the next one, which is SUP 240021, Niceland Farm Event Venue and Tourist Home. Okay. Start us off.
Chair and members of the board, Mr. Stephen Romeo of VHB Inc. has applied on behalf of Mr. David Nice for a special use permit to operate an event venue and tourist home at 9812 and 9908 Old Stage Road. The area for this project is 14.81 acres in size, currently zoned A1 general agricultural, designated rural lands on the 2045 comprehensive plan land use map, and located outside the primary service area. The 9812 Old Stage Road property is currently within the Barnes Swamp AFD, and the project area must be withdrawn from the AFD to allow the operation of these specially permitted uses. A request to withdraw the project acreage from the AFD was submitted in May of this year. Withdrawal requests outside of the renewal period are considered per the criteria listed in the board supervisor's policy for withdrawals. Upon a review of the application against the criteria, staff finds that this application would not cause a disruption in the AFD and that the proposed land use would be compatible with the rural lands designation. However, staff finds this proposal is not caused by an unforeseen change in circumstances and that the request would not serve a public purpose. The AFD advisory committee recommended approval of this withdrawal request by a vote of eight to one, and the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Since the request does not meet all the criteria in the board's withdrawal policy, staff cannot support the application and recommends the board supervisors deny the request. The proposed special use permit for the event venue is envisioned to include wedding and corporate events with a frequency of one event per day and no more than three events per week. The event venue would utilize an existing barn, which has been renovated, as well as outdoor areas, including a performance stage, flexible open space, an orchard, a farm pond with a pedestrian bridge, a repurposed grain silo, and a dedicated location for food trucks. The proposed area of the special use permit would utilize the existing structures on the property, allowing the remainder of the property to continue in agricultural use. Access to the venue is proposed from Fire Tower Road, which is a local road. Water and sewer are to be provided by individual well and septic facilities. The A1 zoning district considers event facilities as places of public assembly used primarily as event facilities, which are subject to performance standards listed in the zoning ordinance. SCPs are required for such event facilities, which do not meet all of the listed performance standards. While the proposal meets some of the performance standards, this proposal requires an SUP because the venue would take access from a local road instead of an arterial road, and the proposed permanent structures and improvements are located on soils which are considered to be prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance by the USDA. Prior to tonight's meeting, the applicant has amended their application, including reducing the maximum number of attendees from 360 to 250, which has been revised in condition number two, as you see on your screen. The applicant has also confirmed their intention of planning landscaping along Fire Tower Road, and staff has revised condition number five so that, in addition to observing the existing vegetation along Old Stage Road, a 30-foot-wide buffer will be required along Fire Tower Road, with the minimum percentage of evergreen trees and shrubs increased from 35% to 45%. Staff has also proposed a condition which will restrict noise from crossing property lines between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, as well as requiring amplified music to be oriented towards the interior of the property. With the maximum of 250 attendees, the proposed event venue is anticipated to generate 63 peak-hour trips from the site and 65, correction, to the to the site and 65 peak-hour trips from the site. Arrival and departure times for events are anticipated to be separated by more than an hour, meaning that the use will not exceed 100 peak-hour trips. The applicant has proposed to widen Fire Tower Road to 24 feet in width to accommodate two-way traffic to and from the entrance of the venue. And condition number four has been proposed to ensure this is included within the site plan for the development. Staff finds that the proposed event venue would be generally consistent with the rural lands development standards, given that the proposal is compatible rural economic development use, preserves the natural appearance of the property property, and minimizes entrance to the property. The special use permit application also includes a request to operate the existing single-family residence as a tourist home. The residence takes access from Old Stage Road and provides parking areas sufficient for four vehicles. As the residence includes three bedrooms, staff has proposed a condition to limit the tourist home to a maximum of six occupants. In accordance with the comprehensive plan's guidance for short-term rentals, the property is designated rural lands, not located internal to an existing platted subdivision, and takes access from a major road. However, the owner will not live and reside on the property during the rentals. While the tourist home does not fully meet the comprehensive plan's guidance, staff finds the location would be appropriate for a tourist home, and its unique situation of being included within the master plan for the event venue would mitigate potential impacts. The planning commission recommended approval of the special use permit by a vote of five to zero. Overall, staff finds the special use permit to be compatible with surrounding development and generally consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends the board supervisors approve the special use permit, subject to the proposed conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant team is also available. Thank you.
There are questions right now for staff?
Well, I want to make sure I understand one aspect of it, and that is either of the two conditions, the not being on an arterial road and the agricultural soils, either one would require the SUP.
Correct. There is a the option of requesting the planning director to find the location of the facility on the agricultural soils to be possibly permitted as a byright use, but the location of the entrance on Fire Tower Road. the location of the entrance on Fire Tower Road, in any case, requires the SUP.
And one other question, the, in terms of what would be permitted under the SUP is the number of events that could occur?
Generally, it's, it's not something that the performance standards address, and from a staff perspective, we look to see if there is concerns to the roadway or things of that nature, and, and in this case, I don't think we found a need to condition it from the staff's side.
Could this site be utilized without an SUP?
It could rearrange their proposal to move forward as a byright proposal. That would involve moving the entrance to Old Stage Road, could involve additional landscaping requirements from what is shown, and also having that planning director determination that the location on the prime soils would be acceptable.
I know that, you know, when you have the ability to, to do something without an SUP and without all the extra stuff that goes in with an SUP, you would normally think you would go in that direction. With, with having an SUP, it gives, not only this board, because if it did need an SUP, or he put the entrance out onto 30, then it would never come from this board, and, and our, the neighbors wouldn't get a chance to even have a say in what's going on. So it's, it's, by having an SUP, it gives the board a chance and staff a chance to enhance the area, and it gives the neighbors a chance to voice an opinion about what's going on in that area, and so it, it, you know, it's more difficult to go through the SUP process than it would be to go through the byright and just do it and move on. So I just want everybody to understand that, you know, I'm, I'm getting this right from staff, that, you know, it, it does open up and it does not only give the county a little bit more say in how this is coming together, it gives the citizens a little more say in what's happening, as opposed to if Mr. Nice would go out and just go, you know what, I'm doing this by right, it's my property, the county will allow this, I can do this, and I don't have to do any widening of roads or moving anything, and, and so I just, it's, it's nice that we've gotten to this point where, you know, we can all have a little say in a project that may come forward or may not, so it's just my.
And I want to, I want to.
Yes, sir.
Express my appreciation to the, to the applicant for going through the SUP process. I think that's important. I, I just want to understand exactly what our role will be in this and what ability there is to address concerns that might be expressed about, about the impact.
Thank you.
Right, we'll be on standby. Mr. Haldeman? You will give the PC report on both, the, thank you.
Like, like you, we heard these both together, voted on them separately. We recommend approval by a vote of five to zero, there were two absences. The arguments that were in favor of this were that this clearly supports a farm economy and is fiscally positive to the county. Commissioners were favorably impressed by the quality of the construction and the effect on the neighborhood, and supported the entrance from Fire Tower Road as safer because of the lower speed limit than Old Stage Road. One noted that out-of-town wedding guests rarely stay very late, so that should mitigate any concerns on that. The only concern expressed was in removing the, the property from the AFD, pardon me, between approval dates, but that was overwhelmed really by the fact that there are already buildings, all the, all the buildings are already in place, there will be no new buildings, and that the, the actual project covers a very small part of the withdrawn parcels. We had one public speaker, the family that lives almost opposite the Fire Tower entrance, just slightly off, offline. She was concerned about traffic on Fire, the increased traffic on Fire Tower Road, and also about headlights coming out of the entrance late at night, shining into her home. This was before the condition amendment that we heard tonight, which should help with that, I would think. So, as I mentioned, we recommend approval both for the AFD withdrawal and for the event and tourist home application.
I'm gonna open the public hearing for the AFD withdrawal. We have one speaker, Ed Canut, Canon, Canun, sorry. I know I met you, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your, you didn't pronounce your last name correctly.
Thank you. My name is Ed Canane. I'm a landowner on Fire Tower Road, and I'm also a former cattlemen, coming back to Fire Tower Road to start a small herd. So I'm here today to talk about the AFD. And every, we own, we own property in multiple states, multiple jurisdictions, and every jurisdiction has some type of program that protects rural lands, whether it be for open space, whether it be for food, whether it be for clean water, clean air. The AFD, actually, before I continue my ask, can I ask the board a question?
Don't answer questions.
Then I'm, I'll try to stay away from some detail, so I don't bog you down, but you have, I sent you an email today that I referenced all the applicable statutes, the applicable policies, and resolutions. So I won't go through those this aft, this afternoon. But let me say that this withdrawal, it, this is not a complex issue. This is actually very, very simple. Let's start with the staff, our staff, your staff, is recommending denial, okay? And the reason they're recommending denial, that they stated in the document, is that it simply doesn't meet the conditions that are defined by the policy that the Board of Supervisors agreed to. But there's something, something else that is, is really big, and that is, when Barnes, like any AFD, is established, they have to be renewed, not the membership, but the AFD has to be renewed. In the case of Barnes, it's every four years. So when Barnes is renewed, statement is, whereas the board finds the withdrawal request meets the criteria set forth in the Board's withdrawal policy for agricultural and forestal districts, and then it references the date. I mean, the facts are, it's not my opinion, but the facts are, it does not meet those requirements and those standards. What I, in addition, what I'd say is, I think the, the elephant in the room, and it seems like the AFD withdrawal is a foregone conclusion, because everybody's talking about the SUP, and we're gonna do this, and thank you for that. While it sounded to me like the AFD early withdrawal was a foregone conclusion, and I don't agree with that, a lot of people don't agree with that. Well, they agree with that it's a foregone conclusion, but we don't think it should already be, had made a determination without you looking at the facts. So what, what I wanted to say about the elephant in the room is that, you know, only the applicant could say the, the total amount, but let's say, while it's in the AFD, you're limited in, as to what you can do for structures, landscape, terrain, alterations, you're limited. And that limit is that it's in the furtherance of agricultural activities, okay? That's not my opinion, that's, that's the act that the Commonwealth passed. So I look at this, or we look at this, and we look at all the structures, we look at things that have been imported into the site, like the silo, and it's being used, it's intended to be, it's not being used for agriculture, I'll tell you that. The applicant stated it's going to be used for, I think, a bar and beverages and food courts and all this other stuff. The quote, barn, the barn, is for, built for, I think, 100 people on one floor and 100 people on another floor. I'm sorry, but that's not sheep and cattle, and it's not grain storage, that's not agriculture. All this work was done during the, while it was in, and it still is today, in the AFD. That's a very important distinction. So with that said, like I said, I'll go back to the, the elephant in the room, and that is, he's probably got a few hundred thousand, maybe more, into this project, and of what I will argue was unauthorized activity. So I think what, what people are looking at is, jeez, if we don't early withdraw that, the applicant's gonna lose nearly two years' worth of revenue. Well, I'll tell you what, that's not my problem, and it shouldn't be your problem. So I would take a real hard look at why, and I hope you debate in open session, because the planning board didn't. I'd hope you, if you are going to deny or grant, I hope you tell us why you're doing So let's see. So if you'd like me to address some specific issues as to what this early withdrawal request does not meet, I will.
It's your time to decide how you wish to use it.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, here's, here's like one thing that you'll have to sign, and this, this is troubling to me. I hope it's troubling to you if, if you grant this early withdrawal. And that is, the actual amendment to the ordinance for approving the withdrawal, it says, and you'd all have to sign this, whereas the board finds that the withdrawal request meets the criteria set forth in the Board's withdrawal policy for agricultural and forestal districts dated 20, dated September 28th, 2010. So it seems to me, when you sign this in favor of early withdrawal, you're agreeing with that statement. So in, in closing, what I'd like you to consider is what the statute is, what the Agricultural Forest District Act says that the Commonwealth developed, the purpose of it, the benefits of the land, the benefits of the landowner, like I'm considering entering the AFD. And the benefits to the landowner, I mean, you know, you can get real detailed, but really what it boils down to is lack of government interference, that's what it boils down to in anything agricultural, that's what it boils down to. Also eminent domain. Jurisdictions are, it's very difficult for them to touch your land if you're in an AFD as a member. They're not tax benefits, I, I don't know if you know that or not, but it has nothing to do with the taxes, zero. Taxes are land use valuation, nothing to do with the AFD. So I think that's all I have to say, unless you want me to talk about something else. Okay. Not prepared. So that's all I have, other than I hope you read the email I sent, because I think I've still got 10, over 10, 10 minutes left, five, but I'd prefer to put it in the email than stand up here and reiterate the same thing that you're gonna hear over and over again. Thank you very much.
Any further? I'm gonna close the public hearing for the AFD withdrawal. I'm gonna open the public hearing for the SUP case. Speaker cards. Brandon Nice.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brandon Nice, I reside at 4700 Fitten Mill Road in James City County. I come before you this evening not only as a lifelong citizen of the county, but as a husband, a father, a son, a brother, a friend, and a business owner. I stand here also as someone who unequivocally believes in the principles and values based upon freedom, in which this great country was founded upon. As you can imagine, I'm a huge advocate for property rights as well as personal autonomy to individuals. You'll hear about those in opposition to this SUP, but I stand here today in full support of it. Certainly many people will say, well, of course you support it, Mr. Nice, you're David's oldest son, so why would you not? And that is a valid question, but I would ask those who are so vehemently opposed and sit in judgment of this to consider a few things from a different perspective, and we'd like to little, give a little background on that context. Our family too comes from generations of farming and building and truly understanding the value and blessings of owning land. We fully believe in honoring all property that we have been blessed with by God first, but achieved through hard work. We're actively farming this land, and many people fail to recognize the value of farming. We also adamantly believe that property has a purpose and provides life-giving characteristics that not many people will ever understand and is often taken for granted. It is something that speaks to the very nature of our soul and many others. However, we also believe it's our duty and privilege and joy to share the blessing of land with others while protecting those core values. I stand firm in the belief that if you own your own land, which every single person has a right to do so, and you pay taxes on it and you're causing no harm, you should be allowed to do what you want on that land, period. There should honestly be no room for bureaucratic or political processes that dictate how a person chooses to manage or use their land within certain and reasonable guidelines. With that said, I fully appreciate the desire of James City County and many of its citizens, myself included, to maintain the rural nature of this community that we've all come to love and admire. I would also argue that this project and property go well above that call and fully align with the county's master plan, while allowing those who may not have the benefit of land ownership to be able to experience some of the joy when they come visit rural properties. When this property first came available, my father brought me out there when you could barely see the barn due to debris and overgrowth vegetation or any of the buildings that were in complete disrepair. The farm itself was in pretty bad shape, it needed a lot of work, we could have just pushed it over and let it stay in eyesore, which it was, honestly, for how we, how we value land. However, I'll never forget how convinced he was with a very clear word from God that he heard, which was to restore it to be a place of light and community. Think about that, how refreshing in today's world for someone to have a vision that unselfishly thinks about others first. My father exemplified and showed this character when he volunteered to serve with the Station One Fire Department twin over over 40 years, just as many others did, Mr. Hippel, you as well. He unselfishly, as many others did, donated his time, money, and resources to help build that organization into what it is today. At the time, he wanted to purchase this property, he did not know what the call from God truly was. Would it be a cool coffee shop that utilized local farmer's ingredients? Would it be a gathering place for friends, a place for weddings to honor the sanctity of marriage, a place for worship, a place to teach our children and others how to give back and live off the land? Or would it just be a place at times he could spend working, which is his true passion, and watching his grandchildren run around during that process? All of these are valid and beyond reasonable ideas. All of them. All of them are also tangible outcomes that anyone who understands the true meaning of a community should appreciate. Most importantly, they're life-giving activities that we must protect and hold dear at all costs, especially in today's world where those values continue to be ripped away from the very facet of our everyday lives. So in closing, I would like to leave you with a few thoughts and, and consideration of your decision. Think about your own freedoms on your land, if you're a landowner and you're blessed to be one. Whether it be wanting to build a chicken coop, or a garage, or grow something, build a fence, whatever it may be. Impediment from others that have no right to do so would violate your God-given right in land ownership. But I will say, it is their right to be entitled to an opinion. We too could also choose to be in opposition and speak against those things that others do as well, but the moral convictions we have as a family based upon freedom simply will not allow us to do so as long as they align with the moral convictions that we feel, and they cause no harm to others. In fact, I would be so bold to say that if you do not like what someone is doing on their land or the community at which you live in, you have the freedom and choice to consider what is the right community for you. This is the very foundation in which the pursuit of happiness was founded upon.
Your time is up, Mr. Nice, thank you.
We have 15 minutes.
Um, well...
We're doing as a group. I have to finish, I have two seconds left.
Who are you speaking for?
We're the applicant. I'm on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, because, okay, so...
You said we have 15 minutes.
So with his dad?
Yes, ma'am.
That time? Okay.
I'm almost done.
Sorry, did not know that.
Okay. Well, as I was saying, if you have the freedom and choice to consider whether this is the right community for you and the very foundation when the pursuit of happiness was founded upon. If we all truly believe in property values, we could choose to recognize that improvement is a good thing for everyone and not just based upon one person's ideas of how things should be. Maybe rather than resisting change, it might be more helpful to think about how we can all benefit from making this place better. I also believe that the improvements made here would actually increase the property value of the property and owners around it. Good progress comes to a halt when unneeded intervention happens. Ask yourself, what is the motive behind an opposition to come against something such as this? Yes, sometimes change is uncomfortable, but it's also necessary for growth and improvement in any facet of life. Something or someone can only improve when people are willing to invest in it, put in the work, believe in it, and do it for the right reasons. And that's exactly what is being done with this project, and I strongly believe it will benefit the community for generations to come. So thank you for your time.
So for the rest of the time, Ms. David Nice. Well, you have the remaining time left, however the two of you wish to use that time.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Eight minutes.
I really don't have much to add to that. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is David Nice, I'm the owner of this project. Our family's been blessed to own this property now for about five years, and my son Brandon gave you a brief history of that. This process has been going on out here for about three or four years that I've been working on this property along with me and my family. I do have a very strong conviction about what this property is to be and who it is to serve and who we will serve with it. That being said, before we ever started this project, I went down to the county, met with Mr. Tom Coghill, and said, "Tom, I wanna renovate this barn, come up here and look at it." He did. He said, "David, you're exempt. You're exempt, you're operating farm, you don't need a permit. Have a good day." Did the same thing on the farmhouse, restored the farmhouse back to its original condition. While all this was going on, it just became quite a passion project. You know, the project is stunningly beautiful, and when Mr. Romeo gets up, I think he has some pictures he can give you all of the before and after, which is the only really pertinent thing. You know, we're builders, we know how to do pretty work, just like a lot of builders do, so... But the important thing is, we restored this, this property as a passion. We didn't have to, it just seemed like the right thing to do, and it is the right thing, and it was the right thing to do. So when we were done and, and ready to move forward and get a business license, I called Kristy Parrish and said, "Kristy, come up here, this is what I wanna do." She explained all the by right uses to me, "David, you're by right here, you probably have to put it in another road." She said, "Why don't we just go through the SUP process just to clean everything up, make it, make it whole?" So that's what I agreed to do. You know, I'm the only landowner out there, and I pay a lot of taxes in this county that's gonna be tasked with improving that road. That's kinda hard, folks, but I'm gonna do it. I said I'd do it, I will do it. But you know, everybody else gets to ride on those roads, and nobody else that lives on that road has been asked to improve it, but nobody else is having folks come into an event center either, so I understand that. We're not asking for any special exceptions for music, for sound, for lighting, for anything. The only thing that we're asking an exception for is to have a reasonable entrance off of Fire Tower Road, which has been there for many, many years. So just to move up the street and put another entrance in just because we can made no sense to me, made no sense to the county planners. So that's why we chose to go the route, and that's why we find ourselves here. It's a bit interesting to me that during this whole three-year process, many people came and stopped by that farm, and they'd say, "David, what you doing?" I said, "Man, I don't know. I heard this, I heard, heard, heard a vision, and I'm trying to walk it out." They said, "What you gonna do with it?" I said, "Oh, I don't know," 'cause I really didn't know. We might have some weddings, our passion is music, we'll probably do both. So it's been no secret what I've been doing up there on Fire Tower Road. The folks that'll come here and tell you so, it's not so. Everybody in this community knew we were building on this barn, because it's, you know, it's exciting. People were excited about it. So it's interesting to me that for many years, and I think Elliot's here tonight, I don't know if you speak, we had a church meeting in there, it was a friend of mine, a personal friend of mine, a small startup church, met in this barn for years, not a single complaint. We had many family parties there, not a single complaint. Had my granddaughter's graduation there, not a single complaint. So I start the SUP process, and I have a wedding there like a week later. Boom. Wedding was a personal family wedding, it's on private property, I don't need anybody's permission to do that, at least I don't think I do. So it was my son's brother-in-law. It was probably, I don't know, 150 people there, maybe. We had an outside DJ on the thing, and folks that live all the way down to other end of Dreamcatchers, when I met with them, told me the music was so loud they could just hear it down there. Maybe, I don't know, I wasn't down there. I was at the farm, though. I walked out to the end of the lane many times, sounded reasonable to me. We weren't breaking any laws, we weren't playing it excessively loud. I do have sympathy for the owners or empathy for the folks that live right across from the farm. I will do everything in my power to mitigate the noise to them, to mitigate the lights to them, whether it's mature trees or shrubbery, I fully understand that, and I will work with them every way that I can to help them mitigate that. What I don't understand is almost everybody in this room lives all the way down to other end of Dreamcatchers, about a mile and a half away, are the ones here that are gonna be most vocal. Now, there's a couple neighbors here tonight that may or may not speak. This next neighbor down has no issue, the next neighbor down has no issue, it's the ones that live all the way down past Dreamcatchers, and they simply don't want the traffic on Fire Tower Road. What this is really all about, they don't wanna be inconvenienced for anything on Fire Tower Road. I don't know how to answer that. So this is where we're at. Some of the people I sold to land, our farm went across the street, I developed it into 10-acre lots, really nice lots, sold those lots to a few folks, they're here tonight in opposition to this. They knew full well what I was doing on this project. I was a great guy when I sold them a piece of farmland, but now that they're there, I am not such a great guy anymore. So ever since this SUP came out, people ride by, don't stop, don't wave, the whole community's All I've done is try to make something fabulous, make something beautiful to share, and that's where we're at. I'll try to answer any questions if I can, but that's where we're at.
Time is, you have three minutes for Mr. Romeo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Steve Romeo, 115 Tides Run, Yorktown. I'm a principal with VHB right around the corner in Bush Corporate Center. I've known David and his family for in excess of 30 years. David's a true craftsman at what he does. Can we get the PowerPoint? Oh, yeah, there it is. There you, okay. I'm not really technically adept, but this is, this is a photo of the barn prior to, it was probably right after David bought the property and started clearing out some of the underbrush. Oops. Other picture of the barn as it existed prior to the renovation. Other picture of the barn prior to renovation. Pretty stout structure, kept it from falling over, I guess. Here's the first picture of David's handiwork on the interior of the barn. Just absolutely stunning. This is a, this is a family that is passionate about what they do. Picture of the interior. Picture of the exterior, and this is, this is a photo captured from, from a drone. And other photograph captured from a drone. There's, back to our site plan. What I wanted to mention briefly is that in the underlying zoning, agritourism is permitted by right. An agritourism activity is any activity carried out on a farm or ranch that allows members of the general public for recreational entertainment or educational purposes to view or enjoy rural activities, including farming, wineries, ranching, historical, cultural, harvest your own activities, or natural activities and attraction. An activity is an agritourism activity whether or not the participant, participant paid to participate in the activity. At the Planning Commission, agritourism came up several times, and it appeared to me that agritourism is a very important aspect of what the county wants in its rural lands. I will also say that the barn structure that David renovated is in excess of 500 feet from the surrounding roads. And my time's up. Thank you.
Sherry Spellmeyer.
The time starts. I want to request, is there any way to turn up the volume? If it's not, it's not. I'm hearing impaired, we have other hearing impaired people here, and I, I don't, unfortunately, I, I couldn't hear the speakers, I'm sorry, I, so...
See what we can do.
My name is Sherry Spellmeyer, and I reside at 10104 Fire Tower Road. I'm here today as a member of a community who were affected by SUP 240021 as it was originally submitted. Many of us first heard about the SUP only after the Planning Commission approved it. Reading the SUP, we became very concerned about how it was, would affect us, and so our concerns compelled us to learn. In researching the zoning ordinance, we learned that on August 8th, 2017, the Board of Supervisors approved revisions to zoning ordinance 2448 to allow event facilities in A1 and R8 districts. The then, Mrs. Robin Bledsoe, then the Chair of the Policy Committee, stated that the Planning Department had put in, in place performance standards, and she even used the word controls, presumably to ensure compliance and consistency while protecting the rights of businesses, community, and residents. Section 2448B states, and I'm quoting, "All event facilities and the parcels upon which they are located must meet the following standards," end of quote. The seven performance standards read as requirements, in some cases, use the word "shall." In my past work experience when dealing with government ordinances or standards, when they said "shall," it meant "must," thou must comply. So I was surprised to learn that when the applicant for the event venue did not comply with all the standards, they must submit an SUP request exemption, that's another one of my learnings. And I learned that the SUP process should mitigate impacts while considering economic benefits, and it should craft conditions to fit the needs of the business and resolve concerns of neighbors. We are here today to talk to you about our concerns. In the spirit of an SUP, my neighbors asked the applicant to meet with us. He agreed to do so and kindly gave us a tour of the barn and communicated his vision. He listened to our concerns, agreed to some changes, but did not adequately resolve all our issues. We sent him and you a document outlining our proposed SUP conditions that address our concerns while supporting the venue. I wanna emphasize, we do support the venue, but we want our concerns addressed. We requested his feedback. I admire the applicant for preserving the barn and repurposing it as a place for celebration. His vision for the venue is gorgeous, but conditions should be established and required to prevent harm to nearby residents and community. As originally submitted, this SUP requested exception to four of the seven performance standards. Now, performance standard number two has been resolved. He asked for 300, he asked for 360, et cetera, so now we're talking about 250. Performance standard number four states, and I quote, "The property shall be located on a road that is classified by the Virginia Department of Transportation as an arterial road," end of quote. The applicant has almost a half a mile of frontage on Route 30 and is capable of complying, but he's asking you to approve the use of Fire Tower Road, which is the sole access for residents on Fire Tower, for Dreamcatcher staff and customers. One of my neighbors will speak to that. PS5, there were limitations on noise. I was going to talk about sources amplified, should be amplified to the interior of the property. I understand now that that's been resolved, but issues regarding noise have not, and one of my other neighbors will speak to that. PS7, performance standard seven, states, quote, "Permanent components of proposed event facility should be placed on a parcel so as to avoid areas defined by USDA as prime farmland," end of quote. Another of my neighbors will speak to that. As you consider this SUP, please ask yourself, what was the reason for the initial, the performance standard? Is the applicant capable of complying with the standard, or does he merely want to do it differently? Is there adequate justification for his request for exemption? Does this SUP benefit the applicant at the expense of his neighbors? Performance standards are required conditions and controls, they are put in place for good reason. When you make accept, when you make exceptions to control, you lose control. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Salzer.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Sharon Salzer, and I reside at 9804 Fire Tower Road, directly across from the proposed venue. For seven years, we have resided in this home with my husband, my school-aged children, a plethora of furry family members, and many farm animals. This property is literally a dream come true for my family as we had searched for close to five years to find what we were dreaming of. And for seven years, we've lived here and poured ourselves into building the life of our dreams. We love our home and our property and our neighbors. Before I go further, I would like to thank each of the members of the board for meeting with the residents and listening to our concerns. I will be going over some of what we discussed tonight, just to have it on the record. We have witnessed an enormous amount of work being done for many years across from us, but we didn't know what the end goal was. But when I received the letter from the Planning Commission, it was then clear what all the work was in preparation for. Initially, our gut reaction... Initially, our gut reaction was, how safe is this going to be? What kind of traffic are we going to have? What's the lighting and the noise going to be like from a facility like this? Especially because music was mentioned a lot. I did go to the Planning Commission and voiced my concerns, but I really felt like my concerns felt on fell on deaf ears. I left that meeting, I felt defeated and perhaps like I was envisioning something other than what was going to be reality. Brandon, when he spoke, he mentioned causing no harm to others. And that's true. But there was harm caused because three days later, there was a wedding on October 5. And the noise that was generated from that wedding was egregious. It was coming through my windows and doors, closed windows and doors. My children were coming out of their room, asking me, what's happening? Where's all this music coming from? My neighbor, three quarters of a mile down the road, could hear the music on her front porch. And if I'm honest, some of the songs that were played, my youngest daughter has no business hearing. I called the non-emergency line and asked for help, and they said they would send a deputy out. However, the music stopped at 10:00. I heard the DJ say at 9:56, while inside of my home, okay, this is the last song because we have a hard cutoff at 10:00. I did call back and cancel the call. A deputy called me, but he didn't know what an acceptable decibel level is. This event allowed me to know for certain that without any type of acceptable parameters in place to protect the residents of Fire Tower Road, our once peaceful area would become unlivable to the residents whose homes are here. In County Code 15.20 Noise Regulations, it states, quote, "Excessive noise is a serious hazard to public health, welfare, peace, and safety and quality of life. It is therefore the policy of the county to prevent such excessive noise. Of additional concern in our area is the effect that excessive noise has on livestock." As a point of reference, I did reach out to the neighbor that abuts the main wedding venue to ascertain her experience so far. And she told me that the developer worked with her to minimize the impacts on her and provides them with a schedule of events. She stated in this three years that it has been operating, she has only heard the music once, and even then, it wasn't at a nuisance level. Given the topography of this proposed venue and its proximity to residential homes, noise abatement must be of utmost importance. My neighbors and I have researched tirelessly, and the conditions that we've asked for are that no noise will cross property lines between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. This is imperative, as I and others have school-aged children. The SUP as written would allow noise until 11:00 PM, and this is completely intolerable. That noise not exceed 55 decibels across a property line between the other hours. That's like you're listening to a radio in the background, and I believe that is completely reasonable, given that the barn is 550 feet from our home. I ask that amplified music be kept indoors whenever possible because outdoor amplified music is disruptive to the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the animals that live there. I was happy to see that an overlooked performance standard on limitations on noise has been added, and that all sources of amplified music will be faced to the interior of the property because the stage faces my property. And if you have speakers directly on that stage, they're coming right at my property. And I think that was part of the problem on the wedding evening. Happy to hear that there's going to be a vegetative buffer in place. I would ask that noise abatement be considered at the foremost, and also visual screening of the parking lot. The next issue I would like to talk about is the impact that this amount of traffic will have on our small rural road. The applicant has requested a waiver to standard four of the ordinance 2448, which states that access to the facility must come from an arterial road. Fire Tower Road is a single ingress and egress road, meaning that we have no other way in and no other way out. If there's an emergency in our homes, this road is the only way to get to us. Our road is a small rural road only 16 feet wide. And whenever there are cars in opposite directions, someone has to pull over for the other to pass. And we don't mind. This is where we live. We're used to that. The applicant has indicated the Fire Tower Road would be widened to two cars to pass comfortably. The widening of the road would create countless other issues, as additional eight feet of payment would be required. And then you have to consider any required easements. And existing vegetation is to be maintained per the Planning Commission's staff report, but to widen the road would require the opposite. This is in direct contradiction to the county's comprehensive plan regarding rural roads that states, and I quote, "Such roadways are not designed for speed or capacity, but rather to provide access and complement the rural character of the area. Besides their scale, these roads are unique because they showcase the county's mature tree canopies and rural landscapes. Capacity improvements and nonrural uses should be avoided on rural roads." The widening of the road is unnecessary because access can easily be taken from an arterial road as the property has approximately 2,500 feet of road frontage on Old Stage. Although traffic may still pose an issue to area residents, it would not require significant changes to our small rural road, and those leaving the venue would key on the applicant's property. As this area of the county is quite dangerous to traverse, I would still like to urge the county to do some type of analysis to ensure the safety of both the county residents and the visitors. In fact, our mailbox has already been taken out by a tow truck towing a truck out of the applicant's driveway. That just happened a couple of weeks ago. Some other things that I would like to ask, the number of events. The applicant has asked for one event per day, three per week. That could be over 150 events occurring on our small rural area in a single year. I would ask the board and the applicant to consider something more reasonable for residents of the area because large events are undoubtedly going to be disruptive. Our request is no more than one event per day, three per week, and six per month. When we met with the applicant, he indicated that he doesn't intend to have an abundance of events at the facility. So we asked to get something reasonable in the SUP language. We asked for dark sky lighting and lights turned off when the facility is not in use. We'd also like event notification so that we know when there's going to be big events. Dreamcatcher's down the road lets residents know when they're having a big event, and it's very respectful and appreciated. And this will allow us, the residents, to make informed decisions in our daily lives. We did meet with the applicant, and he was agreeable to some of the proposed conditions that we're asking for. But he did express disappointment that we don't fully support the venue. I'd like to say that not a single resident opposes the venue. We simply want to protect the integrity of our neighborhood and continue and enjoy the peace and tranquility that we all moved here to experience. In our research, we watched the Board of Supervisors meeting from August of 2017 when this zoning ordinance was passed into law. There was an incredible amount of dialogue and discussion around this proposed ordinance. It was said in this meeting that the SUP process could be more restrictive based on the proximity of neighbors and expressed concerns. The board could specify things such as no amplified music or restrict the hours of operation. Of particular importance was when Mr. Hippel said that the SUP process could be used as a tool, and it could be crafted to suit the neighborhood and the needs of the business owner. He said that input and feedback from the neighbors would be an imperative part of this process. This is what we are asking you to do with this SUP. We are not opposed to the event venue, but we want conditions put in place to protect our rural lands. It was also said that this is a great opportunity to keep rural lands from being further developed. And this is true. And what is also true is that placing conditions on the SUP can marry the two objectives. We can preserve the farmland and protect area residents. It's written in the zoning ordinance that if it does negatively impact the adjacent property owners, that you shouldn't consider a waiver or modification to the performance standards. Zoning Ordinance 24-9 Special Use Permits also says that if the Board of Supervisors finds that a proposed use may have an adverse effect, they can determine whether that can be mitigated by the imposition of special requirements or conditions, including but not limited to location, design, construction, equipment, maintenance, and/or hours of operation. This SUP could very well set a precedent for future SUPs. An additional consideration is that this SUP will continue in perpetuity with the property. So although the applicant may have one idea of what this venue will be without conditions and restrictions attached to the SUP, the future of the property could look very different. We have worked together as neighbors to determine what conditions protect the character of the area. These are reasonable conditions. If you ask most of us, these homes are likely our forever homes where we want to continue to live and thrive and raise our families. A silver lining to this whole process has been working together as a neighborhood and getting to know my neighbors on a deeper level. Just the other night, a neighbor said to me that sometimes she looks out her window and thinks to herself, I'm living a fairy tale. I have everything I used to only dream about. And that's how we all feel about our little part of Jame City County. Words cannot express how deeply we all love what we have built. On an extremely personal note, a little less than four years ago, I was diagnosed with a very rare and aggressive form of cancer. Although the journey has been frightening, my home has been my refuge and an integral part of my healing process. I cannot tell you how many times I have held on to the thought of my home, my animals, or sitting outside and looking at the stars to get me through difficult days and months in treatment. I share this with you because for so many of us, our homes represent so much more than just a home. I ask each board member and even the applicant to consider, if this were to be proposed in your neighborhood, across from your home where you live, with your children or your grandchildren, what conditions would you want in place so that you can continue to live safely and peacefully in your home? That's what we are here tonight asking for. We are asking you to make sure that happens. All those in attendance that support what I've said here, can you raise your hands?
Josh, the vote.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Tebow, and I live at 10070 Fire Tower Road. So I just want to start off by saying that my wife and I do support the venue, and we're very pleased with the work that the applicant has done and his desire to keep it as a working farm. We do, however, have concerns, two main concerns, with the SUPs as written. And that's primarily dealing with the noise and the traffic. And so it was my wife and I that the applicant referred to, and he was saying, neighbors heard the wedding venue on October 5, approximately a mile away. So on the map, we live just north of the Niemeyer and Potter designation up there, the three little structures up there. That's our house. So it's about three quarters of a mile, straight line distance. It's about a mile, a little more if you go up Fire Tower Road. And on our porch that evening, my wife and I usually like to sit out on the porch in the evening. We've got cows in the pasture in front of our house. We like to sit out and watch them. It's peaceful, it's quiet. But that particular evening, we could hear the music at approximately 9:30 from that wedding event. It's the first time we've ever heard music like that. And so, you know, right away, we knew that something was wrong. And our big concern with this venue is hearing music like that going forward. We didn't ask for a nightclub down the street. And so we need to make sure we have adequate noise protections to prevent something like that from happening. Another concern, and Ms. Seltzer mentioned it briefly, was the impact that noise can have on livestock. I mentioned we have cattle, and at night, as prey animals, they rely on their hearing to listen for predators to keep them safe. With lots of noise, especially music, it kind of interferes with that ability to listen for predators, and it stresses them. And as a result, they can lose weight, their milk production goes down. It's just detrimental to them overall. And we're not the only ones on the street that have livestock. Most of our neighbors have livestock. There's a whole bunch of horses. We've got chickens, geese, goats. It's an agricultural area. There's lots of livestock. And so from the JCC Norries Ordinance, Section 1520, it currently states that for uses in residential and mixed-use districts, there should be no noise which is plainly audible at a distance of 100 feet from its source between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Now, I recognize in A1, we're not a residential district, but I think it only fair that the same ordinance that applies to most of the other residences in the county also applies to us as well. Second big issue I have, or that my wife and I have, is the traffic that this event is going to cause on Fire Tower Road. So first of all, the ordinance as written in Section 24-48, it requires an event facility like this to use an arterial road. So we have no issue if the applicant were to use Old Stage Road, but he's requesting an exception to be able to use Fire Tower Road. As previously mentioned, we have one way in and one way out on Fire Tower Road. It's a small road as it is. There are 17 home sites, two working farms. We've got the Dreamcatcher's Therapeutic Riding Center. So it can be pretty heavily trafficked as it is. We also have a problem currently turning from Fire Tower Road onto Old Stage Road. You can wait for up to five minutes if the traffic out there is heavy. And that is a very heavily trafficked section of highway. And in fact, in the last four years, there have been four fatalities on Route 30 within a half mile of the intersection of Fire Tower Road and Old Stage Road. So it's very busy. When attendees exit his venue, though they might be turning onto Fire Tower Road, they're going to immediately be turning from Fire Tower Road onto Route 30. One or two cars can wait five minutes. I can't imagine what over 100 cars, when a 250 event lets out, what those over 100 cars are going to, you know, the congestion that's going to cause, how long it's going to actually take to get everybody out. That's going to be blocking up our roads, preventing, you know, residents from coming in and out easily, and also perhaps emergency vehicles that they need to get in. So the applicant already has a half a mile of frontage on Old Stage Road. There's no need for him to have this exemption. And so ultimately, what I'd like to ask is that the SUP needs to be modified to change the noise ordinance from no noise after 9:00 PM and no exceptions to use Fire Tower Road. He has the ability. He should be using Old Stage Road. And so briefly, if I just get a quick show of hands for everybody who supports those two changes. Thank you very much.
Ed Cunnane.
They asked me to speak about the prime ag soils. It appears to me that, you know, on 180 acres, or whatever it is, 110, you should be able to find a spot that is not prime ax goals, that is not soils of state import importance. You see, you know, yes, indeed, I'm a transplant. I was here in 19, I lived here in 1978 through 81. And when I lived here, that place on Richmond Road, the Pottery Barn, that was a pottery barn. Tuono, that was the frontier when we were here in that time. So what I'm getting at with change is, once ag soils are gone, there are huge swaths of this country that don't have ag soils. We didn't have any ag soils. The only place we had ag soils were in the river bottoms. We were the granite state. Ag soils are critical to our food production. And once they're gone, they're not coming back. Now, you pave paradise and put up a parking lot. So it does say in the ordinance that if you can find other soils, others that are not prime, you should use them. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Dwight Godwin.
Evening, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Dwight Godwin. I live at 9980 Fire Tower Road, about halfway between the venue and the end of the road. I heard it tonight that the neighbors are suddenly all concerned about this, and we oppose this. This is simply not true. We support the venue. We told the applicant exactly that more than one time. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We did say tonight that we have some concerns about some of the things that are going to affect our lives. You've heard those concerns, primarily noise and traffic. There are a few others as well, which we've talked about tonight. But I want to kind of revisit the idea that in 2017, when 2448 was created, this was supposed to be a collaborative opportunity with the neighborhood and the applicant. Well, we're here doing that tonight. We're sharing what we would like to see. And to that end, we have given you a copy of the conditions that we would like to see put into the SUP, some of which, I understand, have been agreed to at this point. 250 applicants or 250 applicants, or, sorry, 250 attendees. That's great, good to hear, as well as some additional vegetative buffer to help reduce the noise. We still are concerned about the noise. We still would like to see it in at 9 o'clock, and those are very important to us. We are still concerned about the traffic. That is also very important to this. So, with all that, and our opportunity for us as a neighborhood to sort of meet and talk about this and get educated, we're presenting you with what we think are some reasonable conditions. We hope that we can come to some kind of agreement on that. As I mentioned, we did discuss these conditions with the applicant, and other than the two that were specifically mentioned tonight, we haven't seen much feedback on our, our concerns. Did I say that we support the venue? We do support the venue. I wanted to make sure that's clear. We do agree that it's beautiful. We do agree that it fits within the county future plans, but we don't agree that it should infringe on our rights. And I heard it earlier that, you know, this whole venue is not going to cause any harm. I think you've heard some examples where it already has done so, and we are a little bit afraid of the potential for that to continue, and so, we strongly disagree with that assessment that this was not going to cause any harm. Regarding noise, I want to just kind of touch on that again briefly. I think this question was asked of you earlier, and I think it's a fair question to ask. If you were in our shoes, if you were in one of those homes, how would you feel if you had to vote on this, and your family, your grandchildren, were the ones that were being affected? I think that's an important question that you should ask yourself before you vote on there. And again, it's important to maybe clarify that an SUP can be more restricted than any of the ordinances if you choose that that is the right answer, and in some cases, we certainly feel that way. I heard it mentioned to me once when we were talking about the subject of noise, that I can do this, it's my property, and specifically talking about me, I could do, I could have a noisy event in my backyard. That is absolutely true. Within the guidelines that the county sets forward, I could do that. I could do it whenever I wanted to, but I am not asking, I am not doing that and asking to do it as an event venue, three times a week, and with as many attendees as what's being asked. So, it's not the same as that. I hope that tonight, you've heard some things that really speak to you, understand where our concerns are, and I just want to summarize by saying thank you for your time. I hope that we can come to some agreement tonight, and if anyone out there agrees with what I say, raise your hands. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Rodney McNew. I live at 9910 Fire Tower Road. I would be the third house down from the barn. And all I would just like to say is that, one, I am so appreciative of the family that invested in this farm. They've probably done more to protect our property values there than if you could have written a wish list. Having been involved in local politics for surrounding counties 30 years ago, I see how the wishes change quite quickly through maybe two, two elections, for example. There's no way in the world you're going to have condos here. That's not going to happen. There's no way in the world that this could possibly be a solar farm. Well, I'm just grateful that these, this family invested in this property and have done what they've done. Also, I've seen those improvements over the last five years. Very, very impressive. I was home the night of the, of the wedding and the event. I didn't have the same experience. I'm not denying that they did. It was very temporary, and I'm just, I'm in total support of it, and I'm grateful for them.
Elliot S.C.H., I'm going to let you pronounce your last name.
Thank you so much. My name is Elliot Schweickert. I am a pastor of the Church of the Living Room that was birthed, actually, at this property. And, you know, we started during COVID. People couldn't meet in a, in a, in a, in a buildings, you know, and there's a couple of our friends, we were outside, you know, and we were meeting around bonfire and with the distance, the whole deal, but this property provided peace. It was so, I, I remember just seeing about 30 of us around the bonfire, and, and we could enjoy this beautiful property. You know, one of the things I want to speak about David and this family is, you know, seeing the way you guys made the decisions tonight, a lot of it has to do with character, you know? Yeah, there is loss and there's procedures, but I know the questions that you asked some individuals, it has to do with character, and this man, this people have character. And, and I can tell you this, I would find David on the rooftop or somewhere building with his two own hands because he believes in this property, he believes in this project. It's not something that he just said, "You know what? I'm just going to do it just because." No, he put a thought, he put sweat, tears, and blood into that property. You know, there was some, you know, implication about financial things, and he lost some money, or he, it has nothing to do with anything. This man thinks in generations, and I believe there will be a blessing. You know, I personally got impacted many times. I will go to that property and pray, you know, and many of my community now that overgrew, and we meet in a different place, of course, and, you know, and, and many of my people have been blessed by this property, and I'm forever thankful for you guys. I think, you know, some of the concerns, I sympathize, and I can tell you this, this man is very conscientious. You know, he, he cares about people. You know, it's not that he's going to say, "Well, whatever, it's my way." No, I believe that, that he will listen, he will do his best to make sure that, that he takes care of the, the hearts of the people, of his neighbors. This man embodies love your neighbors yourself. So, thank you so much for hearing me out. I believe, I believe that this property will, in this project, will bring a blessing. I know that one of the biggest wedding, what is, you know, it's the impediment of life, and, and communicate so much, or people coming together. It's about community, right? We are here because, you know, we worry about community. We, we represent community, and I know that this family, David, represents the community, what community is about. Thank you so much.
I'm Nancy Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Dreamcatchers, which is located at 10120 Fire Tower Road. See it up on that map, right above the Niemeyer and Potter marked area. First thing I want to do is, is acknowledge our neighbors and say how much I appreciate the passion with which everyone has spoken this evening, and hope that we all get through this with a constant and, and constant feeling of community and commitment to that community. The, the proposed Niceland Farm Event Venue and Tourist Home is, I think, going to be a beautiful, beautiful facility if it is allowed to proceed. The Nice family has utilized great care in their operation of the farm on the site and in making the significant improvements to the existing structures on the property. We are appreciative that the project is focused on improving existing structures on the property and further beautifying the property. Once complete, we're, we're confident that it will be aesthetically a, a true landmark in our, in our community, while maintaining the existing character of the property, which is, I think, what, what we all want to see happen. From a community standpoint, the Nice family have been considerate of their neighbors and have maintained their property in a manner to ensure the safety of all around. For example, during storms that have, have on occasion downed trees and flooded the area, they are the first to take action. They are clearly invested in the community and in being good neighbors. We're located three quarters of a mile down the road, down a wooded and winding road from the event facility. We have not ourselves experienced the, the, the noise that has been described here this evening, but I will acknowledge that I didn't check with the horses. So, we, we don't live on the property, but we've not encountered downed fences or, or anything of that sort. That's not to say that, that our neighbors don't raise valid concerns. However, from our standpoint, our concern would be traffic, and, and what I am pleased to see is the, the manner in which, and, and this is following the updated staff conditions to the SUP, so we're pleased with those revisions that have happened. And in terms of the traffic, the, the proposal with respect to widening Fire Tower Road, while, while there'll be an increase in traffic, we feel that the benefit that comes from the widening of that portion, albeit only a limited portion of Fire Tower Road, is a huge safety benefit. And when, when we look at the use of that road, honestly, horse trailers going down that road, it's, it's difficult to, to have two vehicles of any significant size pass each other on that road. So, the fact that at least a portion of that road will now be widened to allow for, for two-way traffic is a comfort in, in my mind. The, I think that, that's designed to benefit or to address the concern for event traffic, which is of a limited nature. The, the effect is for the benefit to all of the area. As a result of our confidence in the quality of the projects that the Nices have undertaken in our community generally, and their care for the immediate community located on Fire Tower Road, their attention to detail, and, and the character of the people involved, we, we support the Niceland Farm Event Venue and Tourist Home. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Massey. I live at 8644 Mary Oaks Lane, Tohanna. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf and in favor of SUP 24-0021. About two weeks ago, I stopped by the farm and called Mr. Nice and had him show me what the Nice family was doing out there. Probably spent about an hour, and I must tell you, I travel this road all the time, three or four times a week, and until the Nices started improving the property, I didn't realize what a gem we had, just a nice piece of property, the way the remaining 173 acres lay in the land down there, and how much of it was tended for agricultural purposes. Walking through and looking at the quality of the workmanship in the restoration of the barn, if, if none of you have done it, you need to do it just to appreciate the quality of the workmanship. And we have quality restoration in this community. We got Colonial Williamsburg, but you need to go look at what they've done with that particular facility. The earlier photos, well, before they bought it, you could see what that was, and to go in it now, it's just amazing. And that shows vision. That shows a commitment to James City County, and, and I don't think an outsider would have done all that to that property. I think it took somebody that had a real attachment to James City County to want to bring it to life like they have. And if you get a chance to go out there, and you can go out on the back porch, or go upstairs and look out the back window, the view, when I saw it, all I could think of is what we talked about during the comprehensive plan update, about our agricultural land. And this venue lets people like me see it that, that I wouldn't get to see it. And the way he staged the venue, you can look out over that agricultural land. It, it was in soybeans at the time, but, oh, boy, just the, the planting, you could appreciate the rose and the quality that went into the agriculture, the mowed areas that they're keeping around that, the cleanup that they've done, they've enhanced Fire Tower Road. If you drive down there on the left, I can now see this beautiful farm, which I know you got to screen it, but please don't block my view of this beautiful farm because it is a beautiful farm. And I think that can be done with, with proper engineering. But we're very fortunate to have someone that would, a, a family that would put this sort of effort into bringing to life and delivering to us what we say we want in the comprehensive plan. So, I strongly endorse SUP 24-0021. Now, I want to tell you, we got a good board of supervisors at James City County, and most of the time, you do a good job. On occasions, you have an opportunity to do a great thing. Vote for this SUP. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Hazelwood. My name's Don Hazelwood. I live at 9808 Fire Tower Road, directly across from David Nice's property. Pretty local. My dad built the house right in front of me there in 1924, and his brother built the house on David Nice's property. During the time, my uncle ran that property, it was a beautiful farm, beautiful. I mean, he kept it clean, fence rows were clean, beautiful. He passed away, and gradually, things went down. They rented the old home place several years. It got to where it was unhavocable. When David took it over, I said, "Boy, he's going to restore that?" It was in bad shape. You saw the barn, the house was worse. David taking it over, the road going down Fire Tower Road was almost impossible to drive. Trees were hanging out in the road, brush along, every curve, you couldn't see around. It was a dangerous road to drive on. He came in and cleaned that road all the way back. Beautiful, real clear. You go down it now, you see nothing but beauty, and you can see cars way ahead of you. I grant you that getting onto the main road is pretty rough. That's something that should be looked at for a stoplight maybe, but I want to tell you about, when I first built there, looking at it from my front door, there was nothing but hedge rows all in those fields. I mean, it was going in every direction where fences used to be. Hedge rows that were 60, 70 foot wide, grown-up vines, bad. It was terrible. When I looked at it, I hate to look at it. When I look at it now, matter of fact, I kid with my wife, it's, we always say, "It's a new day," because when we look out in the morning and the sun first comes up across that field, the trees light up bright, the fields are dark. It's the most beautiful scene you've ever seen. It's beautiful property. David has made it even more wonderful than it could have been, even back when my uncle had it. I speak strongly of David. He's a fine man. I speak strongly of David. He's a fine man. I'd like to also talk about the noise issue. The day of the wedding, I came by, saw all the cars, no problem. I drove to my home. I never heard a sound. I lived just next door to the people that were complaining. I never heard a sound. You know, not the bad as everybody's saying it is. I'm kind of lost for words. Excuse me. Really, I guess I'm a very conservative person, and I believe in freedom. And so much of it's gone away. It used to be, you own property, it was your property, you do what you want. You build on it. If it falls down, it's your problem. Nobody else says anything to say about it. I still strongly feel, "If I'm your property, I'll live on mine. If you want to cut your grass, fine. If you don't want to cut it, I'm not gonna complain about it. That's your house." But that's not the way it is today. I just strongly believe that we are losing so much freedom, so many rules, so many regulations. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. We're at where our country's coming to. Thankfully, we may have a president to go help us. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our last speaker card. Going to close the public hearing, and we're going to take a five-minute recess. Back in session, and I will look to the board for discussion on both cases.
All right, I'll take the lead on it. I met with the group that's concerned about the traffic and the noise, the screening and everything. We met and went over, and as we met and we were talking about it, I asked if you've gone to the applicant, have you gone over to David's house to meet David and talk to him at the venue and see what's going on? And they said they hadn't at that point, and I was glad to see that, you know, they did go over and meet with David. And I said, "Go up, David. It's very easy to talk to and go up there and ask him, 'Hey dude, what are you doing here? What's going on? What's happening?'" And I also talked to the group as mentioned tonight about the SUP process and how it works well and how it gives the citizens a chance to see what's going on in the community, even though, you know, as I stated earlier tonight, David did not have to go through the SUP process in order to do what he wants to do. He could do this by right. Changing a few things would cause SUP to click in. And he called the county and went over the process, and it gives the board a chance to weigh in. It gives citizens a chance to weigh in on what's going on on someone's land. And so, you know, the, one of the biggest things, I think, is the road itself is not wide enough. That road has never been that wide the very beginning. I've been forty, fifty years going down that road. My parents driving me down there, I'm driving down there, hunted down there. So, I spent a lot of time down that road through the past. And, you know, and the citizen are concerned about the road, which I understand. Widen it will help. You know, that's gonna help that section of road. Now, three quarters of a mile down the road, I don't think that anybody going to this is gonna travel three quarters of a mile down and then turn around and come back. They're gonna turn left and go into the venue. The one big thing in James City County we have been pushing is the rural lands. And I was one of the first ones on the rural land committee when it started in James City County. And we've been pushing that. That was long before I was on this board. And we've been pushing protecting rural lands for everyone. And I can't see a better protection of rural lands than this item here. I mean, we're protecting most of the back area. You've got a beautiful establishment. I've watched this. I've known David and his family for years. I knew David's dad before I knew David, and he had a farm which is now Mirror Lakes. And we went to trade hogs with his daddy years ago. And I remember we had a big snow at the time, and we traipsed through the fields to get back to the hog pens, talk about different hogs, number one, two, three, and four. And, you know, and so, and that now is a neighborhood. Okay? That was a farm. That now is a neighborhood. You'll never see that go back to a farm. This is a farm that could turn into a neighborhood one day. I'd much rather see it stay a farm. And I'm glad that David and his family have decided to take this project over. And as he went through this process, I would stop in every so often. He'd say, "Come on up to the farm, see what we're doing. I'm changing this." And David gets excited when he's building and making something. So, I'd go up to the farm and watch and see what's going on. And I tell you, ninety-nine percent of people would have torn this thing down. They would never restored it. You wouldn't be talking about this today. They'd have torn it down and gone, "What can we do? And how many houses? And how much can we put in?" And five years ago, he could have done that. There'd been three acre lots through there, stuck them all in. And then you gotta think, "Well, if we had three acre lots in there with all the houses in there, he could have put in there." And you've got the blowers going, the lawnmowers going, kids screaming and hollering, people having parties, everything. I think you would see a whole different neighborhood around you. I know there's been stuff talked about, and I talked to a group about it, the nine o'clock, you know, nine o'clock, we want nine o'clock. And I said, "You're in rural lands. You're not in a subdivision. Nine o'clock is a subdivision ordinance for noise." And that's because everybody's so close to each other. And we want to make it so that you can have fun on your land, and they can have fun on their land, and everybody can blend together. I hope that whatever decisions made tonight, and I've said it at different meetings, that the neighborhood, meaning the entire rural lands area around here, get back together and enjoy each other. And I told this group, I said, "You know, a win-win is a compromise." It's not, "I got everything, and you got nothing," or "You got everything, and I got nothing." So, you know, a win-win is a compromise on, you know, what we have. And, you know, everybody always thinks that if they don't get it all, they didn't win. Well, sometimes, part of it here and part of it there is a win-win. Talking about the soils and that sort of thing and everything, well, the barn was always there, the house was always there. The buildings around the barn and the house were always there, and they were restored. So, we didn't take anything out of ag, like if he had taken it to the back of the property and built this whole thing. And we destroyed some of that ag property in the back. In fact, David's enhanced the ag property because as he was doing that and working with the county and that sort of thing. And I went and looked at some of those areas that he was cleaning up. And I'm not trying to hurt anybody's feelings or anything else, but that place looked like a pigpen when he got there. And it's just because it was neglected. He went around that property and cleaned it up, cleaned up around the roads and everything else, and I was like, "Good Lord." That's a lot of work dragging all that junk out of the woods and all those trees that were down and all that. And then he wanted to burn them, and we found out, well, we couldn't burn all that. And he had to then put money into grinding them up and everything else to get it off there. So, it was, you know, it was a lot of work there. The biggest thing is trying to find that balance between both, the growth and also keeping the rural lands. And I'm very passionate about keeping the rural lands and trying to promote that and trying to push houses off the road a little bit more, trying to protect a little bit more land, trying to give us those vistas and all that. So, when we have somebody that comes before us and says, "I've got something that I want to protect because I live here." I mean, you know, this is not a moneymaker for David. And in fact, probably if it did, it would be upside down right now with what he's put into it, I'm sure. You know, it's a love of the entire thing. The, you know, there were some comments, you know, that the barn is not ag. Well, it is. It's been ag ever since it was there. I mean, it's changing now if this passes, but up to this point, it's been ag. The silo, even though it wasn't on the site, has been ag. And basically, that was a family silo. That still was ag. The farm itself is still ag. The agritourism is what we're promoting. We say, "We want that." We want to have those things in our community because that's the balance we're looking for. That's what we're looking at. How do we balance this that we don't become, and I'm not picking on Newper News, I'm just saying, Newper News, we don't become Newper News. You know, they built and built and built and built, and then they were like, "Oh, we've run out of space." You know, we used to get cattle down at Yoder Dairy, and they moved Yoder Dairy to protect it and save it. It's a beautiful barn. I remember when the manure was knee-deep in Yoder Dairy. And, you know, and you got the, you know, you went in there, and at that time, twenty-five dollars, and you could have a little steer and bring it home and raise it up. So, you know, I'm so glad that we were all able to find a compromise. And I see in these notes where we're talking about the road, we're talking about buffers, you know. And I went out of both driveways, and I know Fire Tower real well, and I haven't, you know, been in David's little driveway much. But as you go out of both of them, Fire Tower Road, I can see to the left, and I can see to the right. Out of David's driveway, I can see to the left. I can see the right, but not as well because it's starting to go up a hill and make a turn. And so, I can't see- And so I can't see quite as well. And as busy as that road is, and being in the fire department and David as well, I got in there in eighty-four and we've seen a lot of traffic, a lot of accidents, a lot of things. Well, we're never going to stop all the accidents. I wish we could and I wish there was never another accident and no one got hurt. But everybody knows where a fire tower is around here and knows traffic in and out of there. And a driveway pushing up further and doing another entrance, I feel will add more problems in the long run of getting in and out because they're used to going in and out on Fire Tower Road. They know that. And it's like Barnes Road up the road there, you know, I come out of there quite a bit. Sometimes I'm waiting there five, seven, eight minutes and somebody will pull up beside me and now I can't see that way. I gotta wait for them to make the turn so I can go back. Now I've lost my option to get out. So that road is very busy and, you know, until VDOT, which James City County doesn't control that, till VDOT changes that and winds it or reduces speed. We went to them and we asked them to go forty-five. They went to fifty instead of fifty-five. So they reduce the speed a little bit in there. But they, all their testing and everything else showed that that road, that speed limit is fine for that road right there. So, um, that's my, you know, I'm, I'm glad that y'all came out. I'm glad you spoke. I was glad to meet with each and every one of you that wanted to meet with us. And, um, and I'm glad that y'all were able to go over to David's place and say, hey, David, you know, tell us a little bit about this. Hey, can we get this? Can we get that? And of course, there's things that, well, I, I can't do that, but I can do this. And, and found some part of a compromise, I feel we found tonight. And I'm hoping that, you know, the compromise continues with the neighborhood and y'all stay tight because you're a tight knit group. And, um, you know, and, and if there's an issue or something, I'm, I'm sure if you ring David up and say, hey, look, this or that goes on and he'll answer the phone. I'm sure you go on, you know, everybody's online anymore with Facebook and all that. You could probably see the events when they come in and when they happen and what's going on and like dream catchers. You know, you could go on there and you could see what's going on. So, um, I'm sure that would, you know, be out there as well. But, um, that's my few cents and I'll let the other board members lead in and, and whoever wants to go next.
I'd like to go next. Is Nell?
Sure. Um, I too went out there and I met with the group and I very much appreciated meeting them and all their concerns and so forth. And I also went over to the barn, which is the best rehab I've ever seen of a barn. It is phenomenal and belongs on Architecture Digest. But when I think about all this, I think being the Stonehouse Supervisor and seeing tracts of land, I don't want to see five hundred and eighty-four houses. And he could have done that. Mr. Nice could have done that. Or he could have leased it to Dominion Power and we had a two hundred acre solar farm. I think this is the best use for the land. It's beautiful. I think he's stepped back on some of the things and accepted some of the things you guys have asked for. And I think that is a compromise and that's great. And he's a very reasonable man to work with. And, um, I just think it's, it's going to be a great addition to the area. And who knows? You may go over there one day and do, to one of his events. If you hear the music, dance in your yard, you know? Seriously. I used to live in Charlottesville. I will tell you, I lived one mile from UVA and I could hear every call at a football game. And that's something I learned to live with. It's something you learn to live with, but it doesn't go on forever. It's not every day. So I think this is a good thing and I'm really, I will support it, of course. Thank you.
Go ahead and, and speak a little bit about this because this has been, been a very interesting process. First of all, I want to stipulate that nobody needs to, to convince me that David Nice does an outstanding job of craftsmanship anytime he undertakes a project. We can see it over in Building D. And I can tell you that that was a remarkable change in where our county administration was housed from the building that was torn down and never functioned right. I have no doubt about his commitment to the community. I have no doubt about the quality of, of what he's trying to accomplish here. And what I heard from the neighbors was basically that they agreed that this was an outstanding venue, that they supported having the venue there. And that they thought that he had the right to use his land in ways that were beneficial to him. And I certainly support the idea that recognizing that there are regulations that have to be addressed in lots of areas for, for the good of all of us, for the county as a whole, and even for the property owners. That, yes, in, in this kind of agricultural community, there's a, an opportunity to preserve agricultural land and we should embrace it and say, that's great. Hopefully it will be very successful and, and accomplish that objective. What I think I heard from the neighbors was something different, which was basically that they didn't object to what he wanted to do as it affected his own land and his own situation. What they were concerned about was how exterior implications of, of his plans would affect them. David doesn't own that road. It's a community road. And it's perfectly legitimate and reasonable for other members of the community to have a, a strong opinion and to ask for consideration about whether or not that is the place to enter this particular property. Frankly, I, I think that it would be much better to, to put that entrance on Route thirty. That it would make for better ingress and egress to the property. And to me, the idea of, of just widening up to an entrance point on, on Mr. Nice's property is going to create problems for the beginnings and ends of all of the events that occur there. And so, you know, I, I really think that that's not a decision about freedom for the Nice family to use that property as they want. It's a community decision. It's, it's something that affects the whole community. And it is not any single individual's property. The other part of that that I hear, heard was that in enjoying my own property, I should not have to experience something that might be disruptive coming from someone else's property, noise intrusion. And that I think is something that again, it's a reasonable concern to raise and can be addressed. So those are two things that I think I would like to see in an SUP. And again, I appreciate the fact that David came with, with an SUP for this particular project. There's one other thing though, that I think we can't forget about this property. An SUP runs with the land. It doesn't run with the owner. And this SUP would permit three events a week. And I can't imagine the circumstances in which the Nice family would say, oh, we don't want this anymore. But as Mr. McNew indicated to us earlier, a few years down the road, you never can tell whether townhouses are going to pop up or something else along the lines. Well, there may be somebody who wants to do a much more active and aggressive kind of entertainment venue on that site that somehow or another acquires that property. And if we don't think about that possibility, not the good steward of the land, but somebody who might want to extract as much revenue out of it as they possibly can, then we're not doing our job. And so I really would like to come, come out of this meeting today with an, an agreement that we would go back and revisit the access to the road and the impact that noise might have on neighboring properties, not just on the property itself. That way, the freedom of the family to maintain their property as they want, to take advantage of the great work that they've done on it, to, to have a new venue that's available for people to, to benefit from and enjoy, but also to protect those who have property outside of that who may be impacted by the activities that would be permitted under the SUP as it's currently written.
If you want, I'll talk to you.
Go ahead.
Let me start first with the AFD withdrawal. Because I can remember when we did the AFD withdrawal policy. And the concern when we implemented that policy was that we were having people pulling land out of the AFD to basically develop it at three, uh, three, uh, three acres per unit in, in major subdivisions. And that was our concern about we were not protecting the rural lands. And ultimately, this board made the decision to change that to one to twenty, which I think is, larger parcels has, has helped considerably. But keeping in mind that that was what we were looking at. And then I would, I would remind folks that it's an AFD withdrawal, early withdrawal policy. It's not an ordinance. It's not a law. It's basically, it's a policy. And the board, a board policy is what we do is we say, here's what we're looking for. And we list them all. You don't have to check every box. But what we have to do is we have to look at that and say, in the aggregate, has the intent of what we were trying to do been met? And the board has granted lots of latitude in that respect. The board can consider early withdrawal using essentially the criteria we've listed and any other criteria that we think is reasonable. And when I look at those withdrawal things, the only one that really caused me any, uh, caused me to sit back and think about it a little bit was the change was not anticipated. And you know, I mean, it, most people, these things, renewals are fairly automatic. And a lot of times we have people who don't even realize that they're in the, in, in the, in the, in the process. But David's been working on this property for quite a while. You know, you could make a case, maybe he should have known that he should have withdrawn it when, when the thing was two years ago as opposed to now. But I don't think that that necessarily in and of itself should be necessary disqualifying because the rest of them, I think they fairly well meets. The public purpose versus proprietary interest. Proprietary interest would be creating a subdivision. To me, this is a, more of a public purpose in that we were actually encouraging something we've talked about in our comprehensive plan, which is agritourism. It won't damage the existing AFD and it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So I look at it and I say, well, you know, it's not a hundred percent there, but it's, it's reasonably there. And I, I look at, at the, at the, the policy and I say, well, let's take a look at it and see how this affects what we're trying to do. And it becomes really important here. Because recognize that once it is withdrawn from the AFD, it can be developed by right without the use of an SUP if they enter off the major arterial road and if we limit it to three hundred or less. I heard that the idea of ag soils is something that can be determined by our planning committee, uh, planning director. Uh, and to reiterate, when we take a look at the, the maps, this whole farm, every, all, literally every bit of it is prime ag soil. Now, not a lot of these farms are not farmed anymore. We have farms with prime ag soil in James City County that are no longer farmed. It's not profitable for the landowner to do. What are we going to do? Are we going to tell the landowner that because you have prime ag soil, you must farm? Or can you have some other use of that land that is compatible with rural lands, as we define it here, agritourism, that allows you to generate some revenue from your land where farming doesn't pay for itself? Really, even to a great extent, sometimes that, that can happen with a solar farm. So the difficulty I have is that I'm sort of torn because David has decided that he wanted to go through the SUP process. Didn't have to do it. You know, all he had to do is get it out of the AFD. Get it out of the AFD. And I, you know, I, I, I think, I think I would be hard pressed to, to deny him the ability to pull his land out of the AFD for these things. But now, once it's out of the AFD, you know, if you want an SUP process, which he has willingly undergone, then you wind up getting some things and not necessarily all of them. Now, I, let me do a little aside here because I want to talk about the word compromise. I worked with the Airline Pilots Association, contract negotiations between the union and the, and the company. And I learned one thing about negotiating a contract. It's a good contract has something in it that both sides hate. Think about that. You've got to give the other side something to win. And then you've got to get something to win. So you never get all that you want, but you have to compromise. And I, I think the, the biggest concern I have here is that this is not necessarily just a property rights issue. I mean, if you want to go straight property rights, you can, you can, you know, you can make a case for whatever you want. I want to make the case for community obligations, obligations to each other. Obligations to make sure that when you're using your property, you are not adversely impacting your neighbors. I think that's an obligation we all have. God knows that not everybody in this community thinks, sees that way. I can tell you, there are many, many nights I get called out because I got one group of college kids in one house raising hell, disturbing people next door. And noise ordinances are always very tricky. But you have to appeal to the better nature of people to try to put themselves in the position of their neighbors and do what is right. There is no ordinance that compels us to be good neighbors. Now, I'll go back to Brandon's comment. Do no harm. Do no harm to others. It works both ways. I would tell you that I think, I share Mr. McGlinnan's concerns. I would really like to see a, a, a little deeper dive into the road issue because that's clearly a, a major issue for the, for the other residents. But it's also, you know, I mean, when you stop and think about it, if he, if he comes off Route thirty, he didn't have to have, he can do it by right. So, you know, be careful what you ask for. To David, I would turn around and say, you know, you're going to put a lot of money into widening Fire Tower Road. Would it be an offset to try to have the access from the other side? You know, this is something that I'm, I'm not going to try to, you know, dictate. I just think people need to think about it and look at it a little bit more. I do appreciate, I really do appreciate all of the attempts to deal with putting things into the SUP, which I think will help. We don't have the noise ordinance at nine o'clock. It's at eleven o'clock. Guess what it is if he does it by right? Nothing. There is no nor, noise ordinance. I think that that's pretty well sums up what my concerns are. I want to thank David for giving me the tour. It was, it was very, very educational. I went right down the road and sat, spent two hours with the neighbors. I, I want to thank you for your time. I think you highlighted all your concerns quite well. You know, there are some things that we have to consider that you might want to, you know, think about what we're having to try to do here. You know, it could, it could go definitely by right and I, I think that's not in everybody's best interest. I think having the SUP is in everybody's best interest.
Thank you. I, I couldn't say anything to just, I, other than what Mr. Eisenhower has said, really. You know, I, where's Brandon? There he is. Um, I've, I've dealt with Brandon so much more than his dad and have great respect for you. But I have to also echo that I understand property rights. But when you're, when you're getting into somebody else's property rights, where are property rights? Whose property rights are they? And so I think that the neighbors have expressed real concern. Where I'm torn is if we say no, what do you then have? You may not have any of this, and you're in a much worse position, I think. I do wish that you all would find, you know, could you let them know about events? That doesn't seem, you know, with all due respect, going on a website may not be that easy. Is there a way to post something so that they know what's coming up? Our police department, we need to know a noise ordinance. And I'm sorry that that happened because that's been talked about several times from here. We have to find a way to make sure that everybody is trained on noise and what's acceptable. I appreciate that there's been compromise. I wish there could be, I wish we could dig down and get a little bit more compromise on a couple of issues. One being, you know, there is great concern over that road. But if we say, well, you've got to go on 30, then I believe the SUP could just be withdrawn and it could be by right. So I wanted to ask Paul if you could come forward, if you wouldn't mind. And if you could just say exactly, if this did not pass this evening, what would be allowed by right?
So, as has been mentioned, if the entrance were to move to Old Stage Road, and then he would be needing to work at the staff level with the planning director, for the exception, for the prime ag soils. And if the AFD, coming out of the AFD question did not pass after review by the board tonight, he could take that out as a matter of right in two years. That not renewing in an AFD does not require action by the board. He can just say, I do not want to renew. And that would happen by right in two more years.
Would it revert back to the 300 plus?
Because without the SUP, it can't be more restrictive than the ordinance. So it could go back up to 300.
Attentees.
Attentees. By right application.
And it wouldn't have any limit on the number of events per week?
Or the noise.
And if he didn't renew that, instead of just doing the 14, said, I'm not going to, in two years, I'm not going to renew any of it. That's going to affect the district as well, as far as the ag.
I mean, it could. I don't know if it would have a material impact on the AFD district as a whole.
Right. But taking that sizable piece out is not going to help. If he were to decide, I'm not going to renew my whole farm and took it all out.
Sure, he would have that option by right.
In two years, he'd have that option by right.
Right.
And that would affect the rest of that district. Which wouldn't be good as a whole.
Thank you. And Mr. Kinsman, Supervisor McGlinnan brought up the question of the staying with the property versus the special use permit. Does it have to stay with the property? Or could we keep it with this event venue?
No, Madam Chair, the SUP will run with the property.
Thank you. I'll look, I don't know, I'll look to the board. Is there further discussion?
I would just like to suggest one possible option. And that is that we defer action on this tonight and encourage some dialogue between the applicant and the neighbors to see if there isn't some way of addressing some of those concerns in presenting a final set of SUP conditions that might be, if not agreeable to everyone, acceptable to everyone.
See, I wouldn't be in favor of that for the reason of that if we postpone this tonight and we don't make a decision on it and David decides, you know what? I'm pulling it out. Then any of the concerns the neighbors have are gone. They're totally gone. And what we're not looking at is the compromise. So by right, he could say, okay, fine. We'll play that game. All right, I'm pulling it out. Never mind. Thanks a lot. Have a good day. I'm gone. It's my land. I've got a by right to do this, and I'm going to do it. And then all the concerns that neighbors have and by the plannings and by turning the music to the center as much as possible and all those things will be lost.
Maybe Mr. Nice could tell us whether or not he's willing to do that.
I wouldn't tell you.
This is, excuse me. This is all new to me. We've never run an event venue. I don't know what sound decibels are. I want to be a good neighbor. I would have not cleaned up this place to look like the finest place in Charlottesville if I didn't.
Mr. Nice, you need to address the board.
I'm talking to them.
I understand.
I'd rather talk to them.
Well, are you willing to talk with them and then come back?
Ma'am, you know, this has been a hard process for our family, too. This has been painful to do all this and not feel like it's supported. And I understand. But the only real issue that I can't control, I can control. I can go put in another road off of Route 30 and go through the issues with VDOT, which could take forever and lots of money. And I don't, Steve could speak better to that. County staff thought it was reasonable to use, in conjunction with me, thought it was reasonable to enhance that road and use it. Thought that was the best solution. That's why I'm down here. That's why we have gone this route. I'm willing to continue to meet with the neighbors and do whatever I can. And a lot, part of this is everybody thinks that we're going to have three events a week and every event's going to be outside and it's going to be rock and roll music. And I'm not sure who was offended by a song, but that was a Christian wedding and there was nothing played offensive at that wedding. Trust me on that. So it's that kind of stuff that gets, you know, I was playing something so offensive that offended their grandchild. No, I'm I'm not willing to defer. I'm willing to work with my neighbors every way that I can to be reasonable, to mitigate the sound as best as possible, to mitigate lighting, to maybe even come some compromise. I don't want anything going on until 11 o'clock out there. I know I can. That's not our intent. Certainly can stop at 10 o'clock or some reasonable hour. But deferring doesn't seem to move the ball forward much.
Thank you.
So if I can ask, would you accept then an amendment to that condition to 10 o'clock?
You're asking me to comment on things that, as I said before, I've never run an event venue. I don't know how they make money. I don't know if you can make money. I don't know if people will rent it if you stop at 10 o'clock. I would hope they would. But you're asking me to comment on things and make a judgment call that I simply can't, not on the spur of the moment. Now, going forward, if it plays out to that and we can do that, then great. But to be a hard and fast rule of something that I can't really have that much experience with, I pray I can't.
Again, you know, my concern is not really what you're going to do there. It's what somebody else might do there when they have access to that property. And I know that's not your intention.
Hold on, let John finish, please.
I know that's not your intention to sell it to somebody else or whatever. But, you know, if we're talking about somebody who might be able to have musical events with refreshments three nights a week, that's, you know, that's going to have an impact.
Well, I think, you know, we've got to judge on what we have at hand. We can't judge on what happens in 20 or 30 years or five years or two years. We've got to judge what we have at hand and make a decision on that. And, you know, I'm just worried we lose this opportunity to give some protection that the neighbors want. All of a sudden, that's gone. And now there's nothing. And we've gained no ground when you can do a by right. And you don't have to worry about that. And the music can go on till 1 o'clock. I'd much rather, you know, most places close down at 11 anyhow. Unless you're a bar and you're open till 2. Well, then they go, you know what? Well, we'll keep it open till 2. Because by right, we can do that. And so I think sometimes we try to squeeze too much. And, you know, I'm ready to move the two motions if we're ready.
Okay. May I have a motion for the AFD withdrawal?
Motion, please.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the SUP case?
Motion.
Ms. Larson, I just want to clarify that that's with the
So sorry.
The amendments that were presented by Morgan to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stevens, with the amendments.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
No.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
No. All right. We're done. We're not done for the night, but we're done with that. Okay. Give just a minute. Okay. Okay. Did I screw? Take a five-minute recess. Take a five-minute recess.
Just in brief, Circuit Court clerks collect clerk fees. And those clerks' offices with larger populations like ours collect more in clerk fees than the State Compensation Board budgets for their expenses. And that's what's known as an excess. The Virginia Code says that 2/3 of that excess goes back to the locality. Since 2009, the General Assembly has put in their budget that we only get back 1/3 instead of the 2/3 that's in the code. And so a number of the clerks from these larger localities are asking the Virginia General Assembly to stop changing the budget that way and give us our full 2/3. Otherwise, all of these are, are carryovers. I will note in number six, the last sentence, we added to amend the budget to provide funds for capital improvements related to schools, including but not limited to pre-K facilities. That was based on a suggestion from Mr. Riffle of the School Board. And then finally, just so that you, I'm sure you recognize that number 10 is, remains a colonial behavior of health. I left that in there. That is not completed yet. And so I figured we'd go ahead and leave that in there. I don't think they've had all of the money come in and we haven't finished that, that project yet. So I did leave that. It is moving forward though, which is good. Happy to answer any questions you may have or any additions, subtractions, modifications.
Thank you. Okay. I, I would like to ask for an addition. And I would like to ask that it be at the top if possible. And I guess you would, we would say that James City County supports VACO's support of legislative action. I, I can forward this to you, so don't worry about writing it down. To implement the recommendation of J. Lark's landmark 2023 report on Virginia's K-12 funding formula, where they coincide with local prevailing practices. In the near term, VACO encourages prioritization of efforts to restore pre-recession era K-12 funding, especially eliminating the cap on support positions, provide full state support for the actual number of K-12 staff positions employed, and revise the mythology, methodology, excuse me, for calculating teacher salaries to more adequately reflect the actual salaries being paid by school divisions.
You don't want that in the entire back page of this.
[laughing]
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we currently have, Chair Larson, we currently have a, a statement about education funding. Would this replace that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need to ask for a motion on that or?
It would just be, no, I mean, if the board just has a, a general assent to add that, then you would do the motion to, in your resolution, it would be to adopt the 2025 General Legislative Program as amended by the board tonight.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Kinsman.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to board request and directives. Does anyone have anything?
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I want to recognize the fact that our chair was elected President of the Virginia Association of Counties this past week and just this week.
Yes, just yesterday. [laughing]
She's already been sworn in and-
That's right.
And is announcing her cabinet as we speak.
[laughing]
But it was a, a great tribute to, to Ruth's work in the VACO and a great recognition for James City County.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
And I got my graduations.
Yes.
Yes!
Yeah, there you go.
The only thing I have was, I, I did want to mention that, I'd mentioned to Ruth that we have a James City County, 250th commemoration of the establishment of the James City County Committee of Observation. And it's a part of the 250th. You may remember, we talked about earlier, the, um, the James City County Resolves where they were going to start taking some action. Well, this was the follow-on to that. And it was done on November the 25th of 1774, 29 freeholders. And they actually had their names published in the paper. And they were to be the ones overseeing the enforcement of the ban of commerce with the, the British. And so there are going to be a celebration of that at, on November the 24th at 11 o'clock at Freedom Park. And I believe Ruth's been asked to be the speaker there. And I'm going to be there as well. So you're invited to come out for that as well. The only other thing I had was a reminder that we have the Home for the Holidays program is under effect right now. And I think I've sent out one round. I'll send everybody on the board another email to remind you about it.
I have donated.
Okay, wonderful.
Save your email.
Wonderful, wonderful. We are really looking forward to trying to get a, a significant boost to our fundraising here toward the latter part of the month so we can send as many of these young folks home for Christmas as we can. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, thank you. Very, very briefly, I am really honored to represent James City County as the VACO president and more importantly to this, this region. To get, to have a president of VACO, I think is, is great. But I want to thank my board colleagues who have been very, very supportive of my work at VACO because I got involved as soon as I got here. And I'm just, I just really appreciate, and I appreciate that you all came to the conference and that Jason Purse and Brad Reinheimer and Scott Stevens came. It meant a lot. And to have that kind of support. And I heard from Adam and his team while I was there. It just, but I'm, I'm very excited. It's going to be a busy year, but a good year. And so thank you all again. And with that, and, oh, I did go see Taylor Swift, too. Tell you what, it was a busy, it was a busy couple of weeks. I'm sure Taylor knew I was there and, and all that. But Scott, that bring, oh, I will just make one announcement. If, okay, we did have, we, we're going to have a motion to go into closed session. But the county administrator believes that he can reach out to us individually and discuss if you all are okay with that.
Yes.
Okay. So we will, we're going to scratch that. And because we, when, when we, I just want to be clear to the public, when we adjourn, we're going to go back to our JCSA meeting. So we are not done yet. So, Mr. Stevens, county administrator's report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, a few items. Repair, Fair and Recycling Expo this weekend, November 16th, 9 to 1 at Lafayette High School. You also have the ability to bring recyclables and certainly encourage that. It's been a successful event in past years that our Clean County Commission has hosted. And I expect this weekend will be great again. On November 16th, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Lafayette High School. Leaf disposal options for those that put their leaves out in bags. And we will begin those collections the first week of December. There's more information on our website, but there to be clear plastic bags, leaves. And we'll start collecting those from neighborhoods and districts as we've done in the past years. I do want to mention our AAA bond ratings reaffirmed by all credit rating agencies last week. Several of us went to, to meet with the rating agencies. And again, the coveted AAA ratings signify unparalleled creditworthiness and are a significant recognition of the county's financial stability and superbly prudent management. And I want to thank the board for their physically responsible oversight. A lot of that is with you and guidance in our finance staff led by Sharon McCarthy for carrying out the board's directives. I think it speaks very well for the financial condition of this community many years past, but also today. Also want to mention the I-64 widening. We've talked about getting this last 27 miles. The end on Richmond is under construction. VDOT has, has our section being ready to go to construction. It will widen from four to six lanes. The segment will run from mile mark at 224, which is really the county line with New Kent, back to the existing recently widened section. So that, you should see activity there with the idea that it would be open in 2027 sometime. So a couple of years to go, but really excited to get that project underway. And then finally, I at least want to acknowledge one of our recently retired police officers, Nancy Nolker, that passed away last week. I ask the chief, her husband Buck and their family and our police department, and your thoughts and prayers as they work through her loss to all of them. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask one real quick question? Leaf collection, you know, is there a limit on the number of bags?
Huh, I didn't, let's see, 40 gallons or less? I didn't see the, a limit to the number of bags, but they ought to come from your home.
Well, I, I mean, for example, if I, if I got 40 bags and I put them out on my, my-
I put out, I put out more than 50, so.
Okay.
40 gallons or less, so the bag size is limited, but not the number that I can tell.
And then the second question is, is are there any communities where, where we don't go? Is it like available in Ford's Colony? Is it available-
John's house now.
John's house.
50 bags. It's a bit excessive.
No, sir, I think we cover all the voting districts and go into neighborhoods. And if they're out there, that we will pick up the bags.
Thank you.
We do have schedules for that. It's mostly through the month of December. So beginning December 1st, we'll start the collection. And by district is on our website.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have one thing else I'd add. Good friend and also firefighter of James City County who had retired a while, a little while back, Mel Bryant passed away. And I want to console this to his family and, and his daughters and all. And everybody involved, you know, it's a shame. A young man, you know, passed away that early. Yes, ma'am.
All right. I would ask for a motion to adjourn until 2 p.m. on December 10th, 2024 for the business meeting. And just as a reminder to the public that tunes in, we will meet that evening at 5 p.m. for our one, for our other meeting for December. And that will be it. Both meetings on December 10th.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're adjourned.
I will resume our meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. And we are on presentation number two. EPA lead in copper rule revisions and improvements. Mr. Yoshak.
Thank, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, just say briefly, Mr. Yoshak made a presentation to you a couple of years ago about the lead and copper rule revisions when they first came out. I've asked him to make another presentation to you tonight to close the, the loop on that issue.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Doug mentioned, about three and a half years ago, hopefully, most of you remember, we did a presentation on changes the EPA was making to the lead and copper rule as it affects us. So today, we were just going to provide an update of where we stand with that, what had to be done in October and what's forthcoming in, in three more years. So if you remember from the last presentation, a big part of it is we were required to do a service line inventory. And that included the service lines that JCSA owns and also the customer owns. So that was effective October 1st. We, we completed that. It was a big effort. We submitted it to VDH. And the results of that survey or the inventory are online for, for anybody to look at. And I'll show you where, where that's available on the website. So we, we successfully completed our service line inventory. There's a notification requirement that didn't apply to us. We, we did not find any lead or galvanized requiring replacement. So we did not have to send notifications to residents in that regard. Some of our neighboring municipalities weren't so fortunate and had to send thousands of notifications. And then the Health Department is requiring us to include revised language about that, you know, the issues with lead in drinking water. And that'll be included in our upcoming consumer confidence reports. They come out once a year. So again, the biggest effort for us was the service line inventory. It is available on our website. The, the Health Department requires it to be made public. So we basically use our GIS system. So if you go to JCSA's website, you can find a link. There's a banner on top. You can also type in this address to go directly to it. Survey or the inventory was required to include both JCSA side of the service line and the customer side of the service line. And the EPA required us to classify service line into four categories. Basically, non-led, lead, galvanized requiring replacement, or lead status unknown. And although that regulations don't specifically require us to identify the actual material, if we do know what the material is and it has been positively identified, it, the, the inventory will show that your service line is copper. So if we had, if we had means of positively identifying it, it, it does that. So just quickly, a typical water service line, we have our water meters at the property line of each property. So anything between the water main and the water meter is JCSA-owned. Anything between the water meter and the house is customer-owned. This is an example of what the service line inventory looks like when you, when you access it from the webpage. I use my address. So it's basically a dynamic search. You type your address up in the search block and it, as you start typing it, it finds your address. And then all these little dots represent what your service line material is. There's a little legend over here. So green, green is good. And again, all of ours are green, green. We did not find any lead. But if you click on the little dot, it'll tell you, for example, my service line was, it, it might, on the JCSA side, it's, it wasn't, wasn't known what it is, but we know it's, it's not lead because of the year it was installed. And I know since I've had leaks on my service line that mine's polyethylene. So in this case, it actually says what my service line is, but not, not all private sites will say that. It may just say non-led. And so how we, how we created this service line inventory, again, this was a regulatory requirement, a very prescriptive method. It had to be used. So we looked through historical records. That was like JCSA design standards, construction plans, et cetera. We looked at building codes and standards. In Virginia, the Health Department had determined after 1979, lead was not allowed for, for the plumbing code. So anything after 1979, you can disqualify that it's not lead because it wasn't allowed. We've done work order searches. Every time we touch a piece of pipe, we record the materials. And so we went back and searched all of our work order history. We did some statistical analysis. So through all these methods, we still had some that we didn't, we weren't able to positively identify. But the regulations required, allowed for statistical analysis. So of this pool of ones we didn't have positive information on, we were able to take a random sample. And we had to physically verify like 400 service lines by digging them up and seeing, looking at the service material. But through that statistical analysis, we were able to determine that the ones that we couldn't identify using the first three methods were non-led. And as I, as I mentioned here, all of our service lines have been classified as non-led using the methods prescribed for, for the regulation. So what's next with the lead and copper rule? We're required to continue to update the inventory. So every time we're digging up a service line, we're, we're confirming the material. And if, if the material hasn't been updated in the inventory, it will be. So for example, if we dig up a homeowner's side of the service line and it's PVC and we previously had it just listed as non-led, we would change it to PVC. So that, that'll be an ongoing effort. Future changes were just announced in this, these will take effect in 2027. So they're lowering the action level for lead. Lead is kind of unique. It's the only thing we sample that actually customer sample for us in their home because most lead in drinking water comes from customer plumbing. It doesn't come from the water source or the water system. It comes from fixtures, lead solder, you know, lead pipes that are inside of a home. So lead's kind of unique, but they're going to lower the action level to 10 parts per billion. We typically, I shouldn't say this, but we typically don't come near that. Most times, it's non-detect. We recently did a project to add a corrosion inhibitor chemical. So it, it, that's going to help as well. So I don't really anticipate any issues meeting even the new requirements. There's some changes to sampling procedures that are proposed. And that's how a customer would sample for lead. And then also utilities will be required to do school and childcare facility sampling in 2027. Right now, they, they do it on their own. We're not required as a utility to do any sampling of, of school, childcare. So that's all I had. Be happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Two quick questions.
Sure.
First is, I'm assuming, you tell me if I'm wrong, that the customers' fixtures, if those fixtures are post-1979, they probably don't have any lead, lead in them either?
It's complicated. Because, because up until probably 10 years ago, fixtures were allowed to have, because brass basically is an alloy and it has a lot of different components. And lead is one of those components. So up until 10 years ago, brass was allowed to have so much lead. I think it was like 7%. After, like 10 years ago, they changed that to like 0.25% lead. So the, the older brass has more lead than like 10-year-old brass. So, so that's sort of-
Probably some in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and the other part of it, you, you made reference to some of our other neighboring localities. Since I represent an area that is covered by one of our, other, other service providers, do you know whether Newport News had?
Newport News had to send a bunch of notices. I don't remember exactly. Do you, it was in the thousands and maybe tens of thousands? I believe, right?
Yes. I, it was thousands. I don't remember the exact number. I also, I did ask Mr. McGlinnan how many were in the Roberts District. And I do have that answer. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Great, that's fine.
So I'll, I'll send it to you. But yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And when y'all test for the, or when the citizen tests for lead in their house, do they send you a sample or do they have a kit that they can test right there?
We provide them the kit. And they, they, we, they, they tell us it's done. We come pick it up and then we take it away. So they have to take it from a fixture. So, and, and the current rule is you, you, you just get up in the morning after the water hadn't run your house and you take the sample.
Right.
What's proposed three years from now is you take a sample. They call it the first liter, which you fill the first liter up. And then you let five liters run. And then you take another sample after that. So it's kind of, it's kind of confusing because again, it's, you know, we provide instructions with it, how to take the sample. But it's going to get more confusing now that they're going to say, well, you got to take one sample and let it run for a while and then take another sample. But-
How much do you, do you see any of the, um, um, the copper, the, the old copper has it? But also when they solder that copper as well, has the lead in it as well? Do you see any of that leaching out much or is that pretty minimal?
Basically, for our in-home sampling, we have to, they, they make us select houses that sort of had that copper material. Because the same thing, solder after a certain year, I don't remember exactly. You couldn't have lead in it anymore. Like right now, it's lead-free solder. It was in the mid-'80s. So most of the houses we targeted are, are ones that would have had the lead solder. And like I said, our results have been very good. You know, with our lead, we, we do, we do have to sample copper. We, we didn't really focus much on copper. And we've, we've always met the copper contaminant levels as well. But basically what happens is with, with lead, it, it's, it's not bad if you don't touch it. But what happens is if a piece of lead breaks off, for example, in solder, then gets in your strainer on your faucet and water running over it, it erodes it. So that's what, what causes the lead to go into the water. Like I said, we did, did add this new chemical, which basically coats the pipes, which protects that from happening. So we're, we're adding that everywhere now. So that's going to, going to be a help as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
You.
The fiscal year 2024 financial statements review from Cherry Becker, but Laura Harden would be presenting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here to present the results of the June 30th-
Thank you for being here this- [laughing]
I'm going to get through this as quickly as possible. My name is Laura Harden. I was the second director reviewer on the engagement. Rob Churchman was the engagement partner and Brooke Peterson was the manager. If you do have any questions that I can't answer, at the end of the presentation, you'll see their contact information. So we did perform an audit of the authority as of and for the year ended June 30, 2024. We issued our report on November 8th, 2024. We issued what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That is the best opinion that you can get as a result of your audit. We also perform audits in accordance with government auditing standards as well as the auditor of public accounts, specifications for audits of authorities, boards, and commissions. I'm pleased to report we had no non-compliance that are required to be reported under either of those. We also did not identify, identify anything that we consider to be a material weakness and internal control over financial reporting. If we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we disclose those to you tonight. We did not identify any corrected or uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements. Management is responsible for the selection and use of accounting policies. Those policies are described in one of the financial statements. There were no, no new accounting policies adopted during the year. And we did not identify any inappropriate accounting policies or practices as a result of our audit procedures. We do gain an understanding of the related party transactions of the authority. We did not have any difficulties in identifying those. We did not identify any non-compliance as a result of that. And we did not note any that lacked business purpose. We also did not identify anything that we consider to be a significant or unusual transaction. Those would be things that occur outside of the normal course of business for the authority. In the financial statements, there are a couple of items that are considered to be significant estimates, meaning that they can fluctuate year over year significant estimates, meaning that they can fluctuate year over year based on the underlying assumptions that go into making those items. The most significant to the financial statements are the estimate, estimate of depreciation, which is based on useful lives of capital assets, as well as the estimate of the net pension and OPEB assets and liabilities and their related deferred flows. We do gain an understanding of the key factors and assumptions, and perform procedures to test those as, during our audit process. The financial statement disclosures are considered to be consistent, neutral, and clear. We didn't note any that we consider to be particularly sensitive to the users of the financial statements. For any non-attest services, we were to perform, management would over, identify someone to oversee those. We are considered to be independent of the authority, and we have met our ethical responsibilities. Just a couple of required communications. I'm pleased to report that we did not have any difficulties in dealing with management, nor did we have any disagreements. We did not have to consult with somebody outside of our engagement team for any matters that were difficult or contentious. Management did sign to us a representation letter as of the date of our audit opinion that represents to us that they provided us everything we need to perform our audit. We are not aware of any cases where management consulted with other accountants for any kind of second opinion. We didn't identify any other findings or issues that are reported, required to be reported to you. We also did not identify any fraud or illegal acts as a result of our audit procedures, and we do not have any going concern matters to be reported to you. The financial statements include supplementary information, which we provide in relation to opinion to the basic financial statements. Required supplementary information is items that are required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to be included in the financial statements. We do not provide an opinion on those, but we do review them to make sure that they are consistent with the rest of the financials. And then there's other information in the report, which we also do not opine on, but we do look to make sure that they are materially consistent. And then this slide brings you to upcoming financial reporting and changes that'll be effective over the next couple of years. These are items that finance is still looking into to see their impact to the financials. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good. Thank you. Very good.
Laura. Have a wonderful evening.
You, too. Okay, any public comment cards?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Powell? Okay, tonight's consent calendar. You want me to do?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hearing, resolution of James City Service Authority authorizing amendment to wetlands restricted area.
At your September meeting, you approved an amendment to a wetlands restricted area so that the stormwater, the planned stormwater facility at Tuning Road can move forward. This is, this is a related and a similar item before you tonight, same issue. This, this wetlands restricted area just needs to be amended so that we can, we can move forward, and this should be the last one that will come forward related to this project.
Any questions? Anybody?
Right.
Open up the public hearing. Open up the public hearing. Anyone want to speak? Close the public hearing?
Motion for approval?
Motion to approve, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Board considerations, does it says none? Board directives?
None.
None? General manager's update, sir?
Just very briefly, I think you probably noticed that in the monthly report, the delinquencies have gone down to our normal amount at this point. And then secondly, I just, Mike has left, but I did just want to thank Mike and his staff for all the work they did with the lead and copper rule. Really was a monumental effort, and I just want to recognize, recognize them for job well done.
With that, the, that's, that's required. Is there any funding that comes with that extra work?
There, there's no funding that came associated with the work that we have, we have done. There, it was the possi, if we had found lead, there was the possibility of some funding to help resolve those issues, but since we didn't find any, then.
I'm glad we did.
Right, exactly. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. We have a motion to adjourn until the 5 p.m. on December 10th for the regular meeting.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.